Good evening. The regular city council meeting, January 25th, 2018, is called to order at 7:30 PM. Madam Clerk, the pledge, please.
(inaudible) 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 Roll call. Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
City Attorney Barris.
Present.
City CPA Linda Lulu.
Present.
And municipal clerk Nicole Lee is present.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge three very important residents who have passed just recently. First, our dear friend, Mr. Charlie Lamont, who, love for this city, propelled him to come back and serve on the Civil Service Board. He will be dearly missed. He was one of the first appointments I made as mayor, and he will be very missed. Another wonderful resident who has recently passed, Mr. Bruce Ponteau, husband of Karen Ranaca Ponteau, a former councilman who also has served this city in a very esteemed capacity. And just this morning, everyone knows Darlene Schwartz, as she is our community liaison, and this morning, her mother gave into her battle of some terrible illnesses. And these three people in our community were pillars, were rocks, and we have a lot that we can learn from them. Personally, for Darlene, who I work with almost every day, it was an honor to just watch the amount of love that that family had in taking care of their invalid mother. So, I'd ask for a few moments of silence. Thank you.
Okay. All right, remain silent. Okay. All right, hold on now. All right.
Thank you. Judy's helping us with getting our AC lined up with a new.
She said, "Press it, and it should be able to turn into a channel."
I tried. It's locking me up.
If it says you need to log in, I am going to just lock it up.
I know. So, if we have to use the door as the AC, we will, because it's nice weather out tonight.
Press it, and it just doesn't say.
It asks for a password to log into the wireless.
Yeah, we don't have a password.
I mean, I can log in with me. You can type in yours.
Oh, yeah.
You have a login to your.
Email?
Email. It's the same login.
Oh, it's the same thing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. I'd also like to bring everyone's attention that the agenda has been amended. We have added Mr. Calvin Hotmire under special presentations to be number one, and we also have two ordinances for first reading. They have been properly posted at the city and on the city website.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Why do we have two agendas in front of us, please? So, I have one that looks like the format that we always get from our city clerk, Nicole Lee, and then I have another one that doesn't look like the right format.
No, it's the correct format.
No, they don't match. And, and we, so we have two.
So, the amended agenda is.
Why do we have two agendas?
Can we, let's move on.
I only have one agenda, and that's the one that I prepared. Is anyone curious why we have two agendas?
No, I, I agree. I mean, the agenda was given to it.
We have sent out the amended agenda.
After the other agenda already went out.
Correct. And by law, we can do that, and we did it correctly.
By law, you have a certain time that you're able to add stuff.
No.
After that, you can bring it up from the floor at a council meeting.
I make a motion to use the proper format and agenda that was served to us by our clerk.
That's an incorrect motion, because it's not an improper, it's not an improper.
So, we have a second?
Um, I am in control of the council meeting. City Attorney Barris, would you please comment?
I have assiduously avoided dealing with this this week. I have had other things to do. So, you're going to have to give me a moment to get my bearings with this. Nicole, which one, which one of these agendas is the one that you published?
The agenda on the left is mine, and the clerk's duty, 33421, states that the clerk.
Okay, which, which one is this? This one or this one? I got two of them.
The one on the left, the one that always.
And Lars Nance.
Wait a minute. So, this is the one that you published? And where did this one get applied?
Um, when, when the city clerk refused, we had it amended, and those duties were delegated to another person who then amended the agenda.
Well, where, wherein do they differ?
That we added the city engineer, Calvin Hotmire, and two on, and we added two ordinances for first reading.
On Monday, and the agenda cut off names Friday at 4:00.
Well, an ordinance can be introduced on first reading at any meeting, provided that there is a motion to amend the agenda. So, that's, that's really a non-issue.
But.
Anybody can, you can.
But also.
It was prepared by Judy Johnson, and it's a duty of the clerk as a fourth, uh, 33421.
The, the agenda as the clerk prepared it should be the one here, and mayor, if you have ordinances you want to introduce on first reading, they can be introduced on first reading.
Correct. But, wait, hold on. We went through this last month, that the city clerk refused to amend the agenda.
Well, wait, wait, I'm just, I'm just trying to get the meeting going forward.
I know, right.
So, why can't we just amend it? Does, is the council amenable to amending the agenda?
And just add it.
Just add it?
That's the way it should be.
Right. Let's just do it that way.
Just looking for the proper way.
Let's just. And, and for Mr. Hotmire, we can, we can just take him as a.
Yeah. I don't think we need to get into human resource issues of someone saying they're not going to do something. Let's move on with the meeting. This is the agenda, and move on appropriately.
Yeah, I really, I really don't want to get involved in this fight. I, I really don't. I just want the meeting to go forward and get the city's business done.
I agree. I agree. But the hindrance didn't start here.
But it's, it's, it's.
So, can we have a motion to amend the agenda to add Calvin Hotmire's number one to, under special presentations, and to add the two ordinances that were provided to you as ordinances for introduction, ordinance, proposed ordinance, 2017, 2018-1 and 2018-2? Can I have a motion?
Sure.
I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. It is amended. I would also like to.
Just want some progress.
I would also like to ask for a motion to take up proposed ordinance, 2017-41st, up for adoption, to do that first. That is a very urgent ordinance. We have to get that passed tonight. We have a lot of city business on it. It is to protect the cities, to adopt the city flood maps, and to make sure that we can participate in the national flood program. May I have a motion to amend, to take up that first?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passed.
Give me, give me one second to pull it out real quick. 2017 dash four.
We're going to take it first up under proposed.
Oh, when we get to it, not right now?
Yeah.
I mean, we could do it now and just, I'd like to pass it.
40.
Forty. Would you like to do it now?
Gotta go through all these papers. Just give them a minute. I gotta go through all these papers.
How about we make a, then let's do another motion to amend the agenda to take up 2017-40 currently, right now?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, so we can take that up now. Madam Clerk?
If you give me one, I think this is it right here. It's like in the middle. I finally found it.
The following ordinance was offered unanimously by the Council of the City of Harahan, proposed ordinance number 2017-40, an ordinance revising the flood damage prevention ordinance contained in Chapter 38 of the City of Harahan Code of Ordinances to align sections with the February 2nd, 2018 digital flood insurance rate maps and providing for related matters.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone would like to come and speak to this orden, ordinance? If there is no one who would like to speak, we can close the public hearing. Council discussion? No discussion. Do I have a motion to move, move to a vote?
I was just going to say, isn't this the one that also not only could potentially change the rates for people's current flood insurance?
It's going to bring down the rate.
So, hopefully, for those residents that if you were in a designated flood zone, A1, AE, I believe, I'm not 100% sure, that there'll be a good portion of Harahan that could be rezoned X or B or C, which would make you what's called a non-preferred. So, if your premium is $1,200, it could potentially drop to maybe $400 or $500 a year. So, that's a big savings for some. I'm not saying it applies to all, but you can contact your flood insurance agent. When the maps adopted, they can tell you if you're in that zone, and hopefully, maybe you went from an AE or an A1 to maybe a BC or X, and you'll see a big difference in your annual premium. And if you have a mortgage, they will adjust your premium, because your escrows will need to be adjusted also.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor of the ordinance?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Ordinance passes. Madam Clerk, we need to get this sent to them tomorrow. Is Calvin Hotmire here?
Hi, Calvin.
This is our city engineer.
John.
We have several issues that we'd like to address, I'm sure.
Good evening. As an update to the current sewer program, the contractor is on schedule to be complete with his contracted work in February. We're looking at a couple of items to add to his contract. We currently have some sinkholes that's currently under negotiation. Pump Station 8 at Grove and 9th, hopefully, the roadway was passed yesterday.
I saw it today. Thank you.
Edwin took care of that. We have a pre-bid this week. We are expecting bids next Wednesday, and that should be awarded in early February with a completion in May. That will rehabilitate that station, so we can get rid of that pump that's outside. The Capital Road Program along VFW Keelman at Prados is on schedule, with hopefully construction going on in June and July between the school years. The, one of the ordinances that's up for first reading today is for a $100,000 budget for road maintenance, and particularly a lodee and hebe, as well as other miscellaneous potholes throughout the city. I just want to comment that between this project and the VFW project, we're talking about less than a mile of roadway being rehabilitated of the city's 30. So, we need to do a lot more improvements to the roadways as we get complaints, but we, I think this would be a good start. I do recommend this proceed. We are intending on using the Jefferson Parish contract as a source for bidding. We are designing these. We are working with an engineer to develop these projects. Similarly, on the drainage ordinance related to catch basin cleaning, last year, prior to the two hurricane threats that we had, we did some emergency cleaning, primarily along Generous. We spent $20,000 just on that one street, cleaning catch basins. This $30,000 proposal is to do catch basins that are in need of cleaning, as well as some root intrusion issues that are causing us trouble in drainage.
If I could just jump in real quick on this, Councilman Wheeler, myself, met with Councilman Paul Johnston. He had, he had bought a truck to clean the catch basins, and he's willing to let the city use it.
Excellent, excellent.
So, without, we don't have to worry about spending the $3,000, and he's willing to let us.
I believe you said he'd like a list of the streets.
A list of streets, correct.
Yes.
All right. Well, if we can do that, that would be great.
But we still will require money in order to, to do the tree, tree excretion.
Well, the, the root intrusion, again, what we did last year, we did that as part of the LGAP program, the Louisiana Government Assistance Program. We had gotten a grant for $10,000, so half of that 20 was from the, from that program. We could attempt to do that again, but we do have some root intrusion issues that aren't just vacuum truck related. So, there are some issues. Again, if.
We have a very bad situation on Tyler.
Yes.
That.
Made, that, that one significantly, some large roots that have intruded and are causing a drainage issue along Tyler. We did some cleaning. We tried to do some minor root cleaning with a, with a smaller machine, and that didn't work.
And we will have to reroute that, correct?
That's a potential, yes.
Well, maybe we can take the services of Mr. Councilman Johnston first.
That would be.
Before we expend money for the city.
Okay. We can, that'd be great.
And then we can address those issues.
Yeah, we are pursuing also funding for these streets projects through the councilmen as well.
Do you think you can get that list to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pretty much, that's what I have for the council agenda. I'm available for questions as needed.
Do you foresee any other questions that you may want to bring up with Mr. Hotmire on any of the ordinances? No?
All right. We have, we have two proposals, two RFPs, that we are currently reviewing and selecting architects for that repair, hopefully, early in February. Yes.
Because of Darlene Schwartz's mother's death, she won't be here tonight. She had a special presentation acknowledgement for someone that we will be doing next month, and I believe now we're on to Harahan Police Department.
Mayor, council, viewing public, Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. Regarding the deaths, we've had five this week. Charlie Lamont was my next-door neighbor, close friend. Actually, my first time on the Board of Aldman back in the mid-'80s. I put him on the Civil Service Board. As the mayor mentioned, Mary Schwartz, Darlene's mama. Bruce Pontiff. It's, uh, it's been a bad week, folks. Karen Ranaca's husband, Earl Cosgrove, he's lived on Generous Street. I've known him almost all my life. He moved out here post Katrina. And Roger Meyer, one of our board members on the senior center board, all passed in the past seven days or less. Mayor, you know, I'd like to remind you, I am not an employee. I'm not a department head. I'm not a subordinate. I'm an elected police chief. Like you, I report to the public. For that reason, I'd like the city secretary to put this on the record, what I'm saying tonight. Mayor Misselli and Ms. Lulu, again, and I've told you all several times in the past, do not place any invoices, bills, or payroll charges to the police department without my prior approval. Y'all continue to put bills and invoices charged to the police department without my knowledge or approval. I mean, a couple of weeks ago, you put out an email, the veto rezoning 1830, ordinance Your statement was, this is the property of Jefferson Highway in Carolyn, "The proposed restaurant would alter the ambience and tranquility of the neighborhood, and Chief Tim Walker's assertion, 'They will not likely direct any of his manpower to police matters that may impact nearby residents of both paramount concerns of this administration and leading for the reasons of the mayor's veto.'" Mayor, you could have used any, any excuse in the book, but to say that the police department is not going to respond to calls, it's incorrect, irrational, falseness leading. You alarm the public when you tell them and extenuate that the police department will not answer calls for service. We answer all calls for service. And for you, it's absurd to use that as a reason to veto the ordinance. You could have found any other reason.
Chief, do, would you mind rereading that, please?
"The proposed restaurant would alter the ambience and tranquility of the neighborhood, and Chief Tim Walker's assertion that he will not likely direct any of his manpower to police matters that may impact nearby residents of both paramount concerns of this administration and leading reasons for this mayor's veto."
So, did you say that, Chief? Did you say that?
Never said that. I've always said publicly and at these meetings, and to everybody, you call either 911, you call the station, or you walk in the station, a police officer is going to handle your complaint. I've never said we weren't going to handle anything in regards to any place in this community. And, you know, you have a PR firm on monthly retain, I, I can't believe that they allow you to put an answer out for that. And I know you can't make a decision without asking somebody else's personal opinion. You know, folks, our police officers, every day they go out there and they put their uniform on, badge and a gun, they make decisions every day. They don't get time to call a station, call an attorney, or call this one or that one to make a decision. And sometimes, decisions are life-threatening. They make them in a millisecond. Oh, wait a second. I could go call the station, see if this is okay to do. They make a lot less. They out in the street 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in the weather, and we get this kind of answer for rezoning. Whether you veto it or not, it's immaterial. It's just that you alarm those citizens. I mean, I've had people contact me. Y'all not answering calls for service now? It's really not just. It's unjust. It's uncalled for. But that's what I deal with on a regular basis, folks. You made a public records request recently, Mayor, and I want to address that here, so we can try and get this resolved once and for all. Apparently, the mayor is one of many, many, many conspiracy theories. Since I've been in office, I came in office, Mayor 14, to fill the unexpired term of the former chief. And then, January 1, 15, the mayor, the council, myself, took office for a four-year term. Since the mayor's been in, she's called me and the department on numerous occasions for something that the previous administration has done illegal, wrong, incorrect, or whatever. Never panned out. I know she's been to the legislative auditor, and apparently, that didn't pan out. So, lately, in the last year, year and a half, it's everything the police department's been doing wrong. My staff and I spend an abundance of time, wasted time, answering the mayor's questions. Well, anyway, you talked about bond money. We don't have a full-time clerk in our court. And Sergeant Lea, myself, met with you on November 27, 28, 2017, about the court. You were complaining that money was missing, bond money. When someone's arrested on a city charge, each charge, the $100 bond. We've been doing this for years, prior to my term, and will probably continue doing it after I leave office. We had one receipt book at, at the front desk. They took money for two things at the front desk. Fingerprinting, if somebody wants to be fingerprinted for a job, or for a firearms permit, we do that several days a week. We collect cash, and there's a one receipt book. The white copy, top copy, goes to whoever posts the bond or pays for the fingerprint. The yellow copy on the fingerprint went to City Hall. The yellow copy on bond money went to our record room with the bond paperwork. The pink copy stays in a receipt book. Well, the ones for the bond money, the mayor had a long list, because she compared the ones out of that book with further fingerprints, that there were numerous, numerous, numerous receipts missing. We went back to the record room. Every one of them was accounted for. Like I explained to the mayor, if somebody's arrested post-bond, when they go to court, since I've been here, Mayor 14, nobody's complained that their bond money wasn't in the court. One of several things can happen. The money can be forfeited by the court, the money can be used to pay the ticket, or the money can be refunded to the defendant. Since I've been here, not one person is complaining their bond money has not showed up in court. But apparently, there must be a problem when the court's out, but again, the money has been showing up the court. So, appease the mayor, we went back and changed the procedure at the front desk. We have two receipt books, one strictly for bond money, and one strictly for fingerprinting. From now on out, to appease the mayor, the yellow slip that we were keeping in our office will now go to the court, the court in City of Harahan, with the bond paperwork.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, I was just, it just so happens, I was looking at the, the budget, and I noticed that the bond fees were 20, were in 19, 2014, when you took office, at the end of that, was 90, about 9,500. And then in 17, they were down to about 2,500. So, that's a 75% reduction, and I was just curious, like, how would you, how would you explain that?
There's probably, probably well over 1,000 people out on attachments right now. So, I guess.
But why the decrease, is my question?
Well, I guess people are coming in paying a ticket, but I don't think that's really the case.
So, you don't, you don't understand.
The only, the only time they post a bond is when they're arrested. Or if they're out on attachment, means somebody got a ticket. And this happens quite often, not here. It happens every one of jurisdictions around here, and we spend probably, probably 70% of our arrests with the Harahan Police Department and the other police departments around here. Today, you get a ticket, you don't go to court. That court issues an attachment for your arrest. You come in, you post a bond, you get a new court date. It happens over and over and over. Probably 70% of our arrests are people who failed to go to court. New Orleans, Jefferson, Harahan, Keno, Weswego, Gretna.
But Chief, my question is, how do you explain that, that 75% drop from 14 to 17?
It's people that don't go to court, or people arrested don't pay. I mean, there's a lot of people, they go to our jail, we feed them for three days. After three days, we give them a court date and let them out.
So, there's nothing different about now and 14?
What are you trying to, I know you're trying to get it, what are you trying to get at?
I'm trying to get at, I don't understand why there's such a large difference in what was collected in 14 as compared to what was collected in 17.
We making a lot of arrests. I don't know.
So, you, you would think that there's something odd about that, too?
I don't say things, things odd. Whoever's arrested on a city case, if we arrest them, they post a bond to get out of jail.
Now, I understand the process.
If they miss court, an attachment is issued for their arrest, and if one of the jurisdictions around here arrests them, or we arrest them, and they come to us, they post a bond. Sometimes, they're given a court date, and they're not even brought to our jail.
Well, my question is, if the process is the same as it was in 14, I, I don't understand why there's such a large difference.
I don't have an answer.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We also collect money for selling police reports and doing background checks. That's our record room. They have a separate receipt book, and those receipts, with the money, have gone to City Hall. So, apparently, Mayor, you might have a, a problem on your end, but these conspiracy theories that we've done something wrong, there is nothing missing, trust me. You're saying also the bond forms need to be changed. Well, if you want to pay to have them rewritten and, and published, that's fine. But there's two forms. One with a cash bond, and one's if somebody released on ROR, released on records, where they didn't post a bond. Let's see what else. And then, the accusation that tickets and ticket books are not accounted for. Legislative auditor came in in 2014 when I took office. They went through our department and did an audit, and we're in compliance. We made some changes to be in compliance. We account for every ticket, and every ticket book is in our office. Let's see what else here. Oh, going back to those receipts. At the time we met with you, I told you I would have checked for January 2017 about the receipts. There were nine. As far as just to go through, 2016 and 2017, and pull all those, not going to happen. But they're in our office. These are the ones I promised I'd give you. There's nine bonds that were posted in 2017 in January.
Where are the receipts for them? You have them on there?
The copies are on there? All right. Then you brought up that somebody was given a ticket. We claim they were arrested. As a courtesy, our records clerk, when they found that somebody had been arrested for not showing up in court, they took a postum note, and they put it on a ticket, or paperwork they sent to the court. You're saying we did it. I don't think we did it, it could have happened in a court. But you went and contacted that person, asked to see if they were arrested. So you made a big to-do out of nothing, saying, I understand, Ms. So-and-so, you were arrested, and they weren't. It's probably that when the paperwork got to the court, the court messed up with the piece of paper. Then you talked about the time and attendance sheets. If you notice, since December 21st, after you made, after you made the complaint in November of last year, we went with, contacted the city attorney, he made the recommendations to our time and attendance sheet, and we made those corrections. So since the end of last year, we've been making the corrections on our time and attendance, our payroll sheets, folks. So I don't know why you keep saying it needs to make the change, the changes have been made. You know, you talk about cooperation. There is none, folks, trust me. But about a year ago, when one of your part-time clerks overcharged a defendant, and the defendant found out that they paid more than they were supposed to, guess what happened? That clerk sent a check from their personal checking account to the defendant. It came to my attention, I checked, the money was properly recorded in the city, and I requested to meet the mayor and talk about it. Mayor refused to meet with me to talk about it. Again, we're in compliance with the state legislative auditor in regards to our tickets and our processing. I've asked you numerous times, I've sent you emails, saying that we need to get a new auditing firm. In 2016, in 2017, the auditor, did the audit for the police department, said we were over budget sixty-six thousand dollars. After we sent documentation to the city auditor and to our city finance director, the auditor said we were ninety-one thousand dollars, not under budget, not over budget. City finance director said, no, you're seventy-five thousand. However, the city auditor put the audit still in with the state that we're sixty-six thousand over in 2016. As I said before, the people have made comments, they won't meet with me, they won't come to a council meeting to explain what they did or how they did it, and you continue to use these people. I don't know how we're going to do an audit this year when you've got somebody saying that when I spoke to them, how do we want to be in sixty-six thousand dollars over budget? The first thing they tell me, we use the numbers that the city provided. Folks, our money is done by ordinance, by this council. The council mandates where the money is going on our city budget. It can only be amended or changed by the city council. So for the auditor, the city auditor to say that they used the numbers the city gave them, and it didn't appear to be the ordinances that dealt with it, and then when we provided that information to the city auditor, we're under budget, and it still puts us in the city audit as being over budget. I don't know, I really have a problem with that. Ms. Lulu, a couple of questions, please. How much, and you've got your computer, how much should you bill the city of Harahan for services in 2016? Pardon?
Can we come back to that?
I may ask both, start with sixteen. What are you shaking your head now?
We're in the middle of that.
She's going to look this up in the meantime.
I just asked if we could come?
Pardon?
I just asked if could we come back to this and move forward, and the lady said no.
Okay. Sheriff Lapinto just walked in the office. I'd like the council, if they'd give him a couple of minutes to speak, please, while the city auditor's looking up how much she charged the city for 2016 and 17?
Sure, I'd like the motion to give him a couple of minutes to talk.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda to have Mr. Sheriff Joe Lapinto come up by Councilman Johnston.
I'll second.
Second, and by Councilman Baudier, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays.
Either one, either side.
Welcome.
Just happened to be around the corner, we had Alliance for Good Government Forum at Harahan Senior Center just now, so just was literally finishing that up, and so, well, I can stop by, we all have the council meeting. For y'all don't know, Sheriff Joe Lapinto, just come by to say hello, introduce myself. I know you've seen me on TV enough over the years, and, you know, have me out there recently with the campaign going on, really with Jefferson Parish, giving an update on us as a parish right now. Experienced some of the lowest crime rates that we've had in unincorporated Jefferson Parish, really since 1974. We had a double-digit decrease in UCR crimes this year, a ten-point-four reduction in crime, which gives us the numbers, the lowest that there have been since 74. We've done that consistently over the last three years, have gone down, really only three times in our history have we had a reduction of over double digits, and one of those years was Katrina. So very proud of what we're doing in unincorporated areas of Jefferson. Pretty, pretty good, you know, all the way around, you know, whether it's City of Harahan or the other five municipalities that we have in the parish, we've done well. You know, things that we need to think about from our crime perspective, always, unlocked cars. And we had almost 2,000 vehicle burglaries last year in Jefferson Parish, and seventy-seven percent of those were from unlocked vehicles. We can get everybody to press that button before they go to sleep at night, we can knock down our crime rate a whole bunch, you know? And that doesn't make a difference where it's at. It's going to happen here, it's going to happen anywhere. We don't have the areas that's, okay, this is something that's more prevalent, just press that button. Press that button in order to make sure that we can try to, you know, knock those crimes down. Unfortunately, a lot of them are heroin-based now. You know, we have a lot of people that are still increasing their amount of drugs with heroin. We've done a good job over the past few years of decreasing our drug addictions from prescriptions. Our prescription monitoring program that went into effect decreased the amount of pills that we used to seize, about 25,000 a year, down to about 3,000 last year. But our heroin seizures went up five times. Our heroin seizures are off the chart. People are moving to that as they can't get the prescription pills, so they're moving to heroin. And that addiction is harder than ever to break. Doesn't, doesn't affect just one socioeconomic class of people, it affects all of us. So the better that we can do to protect ourselves, the better we have with our own crime stats, to make sure that we can, you know, live a little bit better life. With that, y'all, I mean, I didn't mean to take over anything, I didn't even know I was going to talk, but, you know, thank y'all for having me. Is it appropriate to take questions, or is it not appropriate? I have no clue.
I'd just like to thank the help you do with Harahan with Chief Walker and the blending that you do to help us out.
You know, and what we do with Harahan, for the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, all of Harahan's calls are actually dispatched through our 911 system. We participate in that way, and so, not only are they on the same channels that we have, we have the ability to back up your officers when they, when it is needed, but also, it defrays some of that cost, too, the amount of things that we end up utilizing, that you don't have to have your own 911 system, you're able to go through the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, we're able to dispatch that. We also do that for Lafitte, Grand Isle, and Weswego also, which we try to do that as a parish, and whenever you need it for certain events or bigger events that are outside the scope of what you can do in the city itself, we'll always be there to help. So, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Y'all have a great day.
Can't say enough, I'm all about officer safety, I preach it all the time. We have a great relationship with Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, as the sheriff mentioned, work off their radio channel, and also the Levy District of East Jefferson. And our officers and the officers interact on a daily basis, and they provide a lot of services for us. Since Sheriff's been in office, he's done a lot to assist me in the operation of our Harahan Police Department. Well, we're waiting for Ms. Lulu to get back. I can go on to a couple of other items. A month ago, ordinance 1839 was passed unanimously. It's granting full read-only access to the City of Harahan financials. We have a financial package, software package, that the city uses to do their daily financials, which goes into our monthly and yearly audit. This was passed December of 2017. I sent the email to the mayor, giving our department full access, and the mayor has not replied. Do you plan on letting us have full access to the financials?
I think we need to have an appropriation to give that access to you also.
An appropriation? How much?
I don't know, Chief.
Wait, just, we have access, there's a line hooked up between my secretary's office and to this computer at City Hall. Now they talking about, we have to pay to get the information?
That we have a computer software system that the city pays for, just like we pay for everything else. It's a contract, and anyone who uses it is going to have to pay for it. It's just the same way that I can't call Ms. Whittle over to come in, or I can't use some of your contract, for instance, for something.
What one of our contracts would you want to use, ma'am?
Well, I'm just saying, like, if I wanted to go and use a car or vehicle, I can't just do that, I, because you're a duly-elected office holder, and we need to do that. So I'd like to hash that out with you.
I'm sorry, we are actually correlating. You borrowing a police car?
No.
With the chief of police getting access to a financial system to run his budget, is that what just happened?
We have a thirty-three-thousand-dollar annual-
That was the correlation, everyone.
Wait, wait, we have a thirty-three-thousand-dollar annual contract that this council, four council members, did not fully fund. The use of anything, if I would use anything from the police department, I would get, expect a charge, and when the police use anything from the cities, that would use anything with the city, there is an appropriate charge. So, all I'm asking is that we do these appropriations and we appropriate correctly.
Is there an extra charge to?
We answer calls for service, Mayor, at City Hall, we don't charge you. We answer calls for service to the public, we don't go out and say, look, it's 25 dollars you called up.
We don't give us a, no, because when I pay my taxes-
It's part of government service, and part of providing this to us, with the line that's already committed.
Chief, it's the same way, I can't, you can't use my staff, I can't use your staff. Those are some simple things that we understand. If you buy paper, I can't go take your paper and vice versa. So let's do an appropriation and we move forward.
So, Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Ms. Whittle and Chief, didn't y'all have access before?
They still have access.
Limited, yeah.
Okay, and were y'all ever appropriated or billed expenses when you had it before?
No.
And truly, it should be. And it should be.
So, the access has been taken away?
No.
That's ridiculous.
No. Well, that's my knowledge.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so now to get it back, now you want to charge them?
Do you have access?
Limited.
You have access? So your access wasn't taken away?
I have limited access.
Okay.
Wait, hold on a second, Tracy, Tracy, hold on. What has happened, folks, to put it bluntly, we're the largest department in the city. We have the largest operating budget in the city, the police department. In 2016, the council allocated to Ms. Lulu a finance director. She's a CPA on contract, gets a hundred-five dollars an hour, and her associate gets seventy-five dollars an hour. Most of it's just bookkeeping, some of it, I agree, she's a CPA, does some other stuff, but the majority of it, it goes into the software package. In 2016, the first time the police department, myself, received a financial statement was October of 16. It only went through July. You take your checkbook at home, and you're trying to balance your budget, and you're going into October, one of our busiest months, starting at Thanksgiving through New Year's Eve, we use a lot of overtime, trying to get a handle and be within compliance and be within budget, and we've got a financial statement that only went through July. Doesn't tell us anything. And the mayor, and go on record, she did it to the news media, saying that anything that's left in a department's account after December 31st is hers. Now, what you can see when Ms. Lulu comes back, in 2016, she was allocated 48,000, she admitted at one of the meetings, she made over 144,000. We believe it's a lot more than 144,000, if the numbers come out. This past year, in 17, she was paid well over $200,000 for accounting services. Where do you think the money's coming from, out of whose budget? Just like the mayor said, I want to charge you because the software's already there, but you hooked up to the computer already, but if you're going to get more access to it, you're going to pay part of it. Makes no sense at all. It's all part of government, we're all under the same roof, City of Harahan. And I've been asking since the latter part of 2016 to meet with Ms. Lulu over financials, and when now we're in the beginning of 2018, has not happened, and probably will not happen. And first to pay those kind of numbers for a finance director that's allocated 48,000, over 200? It's absurd, it's ridiculous. It's your tax money, my tax money, money that we could use for the police department to better serve you.
Chief, can I ask you, Mr., I know you don't want to get involved in this, but I'm going to involve you in this, one second. We wrote a law, and passed a law, that says it gives this man full access, full read-only access, all right? How is it to the mayor to deny him, or say, now it's got to be, we wrote the law, if the mayor does not abide by our law, is that not breaking the law?
Did it direct the mayor specifically to do that?
We directed the mayor's office to give the chief of police full read, read-only access.
I don't have a problem. But it's-
I'm just telling, exactly.
I'm just going to tell you this.
Microphone.
I, I'm, I'm not trying to get in an argument, Mr. Bures, but this is, these are the simple facts, simple facts. The police department utilized the maintenance department.
I am saying, and, and, and look, and look, just, my lawyer in the street view of this is that both sides are right. If, if the system is being used system-wide, and everybody's budget should contribute to buying the software that everybody's using. But by the same token, you got to, I mean, he's part of city government, he should have access to read the financials, I mean, there's, I don't think there's any question about that.
He can read his financials.
But, you know, the fight comes down to this, he doesn't want his department to be, to be charged anything but for guns, bullets, uniforms, and automobiles, and that's not the way the world works. Your department shares in the overall overhead of city government, it's the largest, it's the largest budget item in the whole budget.
It sure is.
And I don't think it's unreasonable for the accountant to sit there and say, okay, we're allocating costs over all of city government, and how she does it is accountant's magic, okay? I don't pretend to know anything about it. But I've seen it done in other governments, it's not, it's not unusual, it's not cause for, you know-
Well, let's go back, it was 2015, 2016, because I'm part of this building, there's one of-
There's not a real legal issue presented to me?
Well, I don't mind, I pay it. But going back to 2015, 2016, because there's one electric meter for this whole building, we agreed we'd pay forty percent of the electric bill. I'll pay a hundred percent of the electric bill. I'll pay the hundred percent of the software bill. Just allocate the money to the police department. You keep nibbling, nibbling, nibbling at our budget and eating it up. The 33,000's already paid for the software, the line is already there. All it takes is some little things on a computer, and we'll have access. They don't want us to have access, because then we discover things that we're being charged for that don't belong to us.
Maybe there's a conceptual difficulty in the way the entire budget is, is conceived of, because it appears that, that what the concept- of, because it appears that, that what the concept is, is that you get a lump sum of money during the year, and then you have to pay everything out of that. And is that the way you think it actually works?
I'm sorry? Say that again?
Well...
Well, you know, the mayor said...
The notion of control over the city budget is, I think, where the problem actually lies. You know, let me give you a for instance. The single largest item, I'm sure, of your budget is personal services.
Payroll and payroll expenses.
Exactly. Now, you're an elected police chief, true, and you have the power to appoint, but the state law actually says you have the power to appoint, subject to the appropriation of the mayor and council. It says both. Mayor and council have to agree on this to give you the money. So, though you're an elected police chief, your power to appoint is actually governed by what gets appropriated and approved by the mayor and the council. So, it's not as if they give you, at the beginning of the year, a pot of money, and you go hire anybody you want. I mean, everything you do on that, on that particular budget item, has to go through governmental approval. And I think one of the problems here is that, you know, there just isn't any agreement on what these shared overhead allocations should be. And how do we resolve this problem? Because I keep hearing this every meeting, and it's really getting, it's really wearing me down, folks. I got real legal business to handle for the City of Harrington. That's what I'm seeing. And I was trying to ask a real legal question, not whether it's appropriate or not. Mayor, just let him, just give him the password and let him look.
He's got it.
No, we don't have.
What don't you have? What can't you see?
A lot of the financials...
What can't you see? What, if you get on the computer, can't you see?
Part of the financials are things that we being billed for that we haven't approved.
Yeah, not answering my question. What is it that you can't see?
The full financials. We being charged for...
What's the full financial? What do you mean?
All the financials. We only can see the financials directly related to the police department. But other items are being charged to the police department and put in other areas.
So...
No, it's not. Everything goes back to the...
I think it's time for this council to get a, runs an audit to come in and look at the books, and really see what's going on.
Gilbert, I'm gonna tell you the honest truth, Gilbert. It's gonna take time to make that happen. We are so busy in these little nascent wars, as you have explained...
Who's the software guru who gives, who grants the access, who says, "You get this, you get this?"
Linda will have to figure out...
Linda's not the software guru.
Wait, wait. Linda will have to figure out. With ENCODE, it's not as easy, because there are levels of access and approvals.
I can understand that.
It is complicated, and it will take a bit of time to accomplish.
I cannot, I cannot imagine that. I have implemented so many...
I have too, Ms. Bures.
Okay. IT platforms in my life, and you write, you write the rules as to what that person can see, or do, or read only. And you're telling me that our CPA will have a lot of work on her, so she can grant our chief of police the access he needs? Is that what just happened, just now, too?
There's gonna be work to be done on that end, yes.
It took them five minutes to take it away from us. I don't want to take them, it's time to get it.
I don't know what happened, yet he came. These are the...
So, what is it? What, you know, I'm trying to understand...
But City Attorney Bureau...
Well, I'll tell ya, and then we brought up it a couple means ago.
There may be, there may be legitimate reasons that full access to all of the city's information can't be, can't be...
I'll give you an example. I have it a couple of months ago.
Let me add, let me finish. Wait, timeout. Do you, does the council have full access to the, to the budget software?
Mr. Bures, we can't even get run sheets.
Yeah, we can't even get run sheets, right.
It's like a LOL. As some very important concern she has about internal controls, and what, what is where. There are sophisticated issues when it comes to accounting.
He's asking for read-only...
How do we resolve this? So, I'm, again, I just, excuse me, ma'am, I'm just asking a question, simply this, because I've heard this a million times, that you cannot write a law that inhibits the mayor's ability to do her job, right? So, we know that, because we've heard this. This has been how she scapegoats out of every law we write, okay? So, this is a law, and I don't see in my, and I'm, call me simple, but I don't see in my simple mind how this inhibits her ability to do her job, to allow this man read-only, and so we can stop talking about this at every single council meeting. Yeah, I'm, I'm...
Can I intercede?
So, this is what, this is what I suggest.
So, what happens when I get all the questions from the chief and Linda, and he says we cannot bill him when he's got all the questions, and she's got 10, 20-plus hours of work?
I'm getting billed for things I don't know about.
If you're going to implement exceptions for anybody to be, and look, not everybody should have their nose in the city's software. I mean, I think we can all agree with that. But you have to have legitimate reasons why the access is being restricted. And, and...
She doesn't want his questions.
No, I don't think that's the case, but, you know, but, but there's, there's also the question of, you know, supervisor access has one level, subordinate access has another level. And I don't pretend to be an expert in this area. Maybe we should get some... I gotta be honest with you. Just give this man read-only, so that's like a five minutes of our life that we can have back at every council meeting. Because I can't get this five minutes back. I just age five minutes, listening to this game.
And, but we keep fighting the same fight.
Mayor, look, if, let me, let me put it to you in lawyers, in lawyer speak. If the council decides to go out and hire Joe Broll lawyer to sue you, to have that ordinance enforced, your lawyer, be it me or somebody else, is gonna say, "Give me the reasons you restricted the access."
Linda had, we're gonna...
They're gonna ask you.
Right.
"Give me the reasons that the access was restricted." And those, those reasons will be judged by people who know about computer security issues, as to why certain people shouldn't be looking at certain things, and how the access should be restricted. So, maybe there needs to be a deadline set, where, you know, the, where, because...
I agree.
I think everybody is really tired of hearing this.
But you know what, Gilbert? I think the administration has been put under undue stress by the police chief. The amount of work that you can personally attest to that has been pushed your way is not only yours.
Oh, really? Let's hear that.
Excuse me, I'm just addressing it.
Well, the accusations, you make a false, as usual.
You made, you're up to 13 accusations that are false.
Oh, really? Let's, we'll go toe-to-toe with them.
So, what I'm saying is...
I can document what I'm saying.
If I'm gonna have, there, he wants to be able to call the city attorney, wants to be able to call the CPA, wants to be able to call the auditor, he wants to be able to call my maintenance group, he wants to be able to micromanage HR, et cetera, and all those bills are gonna accumulate on me, and they're his generated bills. So, when does it become, and not his responsibility? He's not taking part and taking part and doing his fair share.
Well, you know, look, all of these discussions are discussions that should be had someplace other than a public meeting, first off.
Correct, I agree.
And, and second, I don't, I don't disagree. There's legitimacy to your, to your point. And I'm happy, as a lawyer, to sit there and try to apportion the work on my bills as best I can. It's probably not practical for the maintenance department. I mean, they can't be sitting there, you know, it's just, they don't have time to keep records like that. So, look, you, you guys have really got to ratchet this down. I mean, this is, this is, it's, it's just, it's just very draining, you know?
It is draining.
It's an easy fix.
It is.
We had to write a law to get, we had to write a law. Mayor, just, mayor, just have the computer, just have the computer experts say, "You can have this access and this access for these reasons." Bup-de-bop-de-boop, and we got that problem taken care of.
You cannot strip about $200,000 out of a small budget, give it to the police department, and then expect me to fund it.
I understand.
I am functioning at less money than they did in 13 and 14.
There's legitimacy to this.
But you're telling everybody else about it.
No, it has everything to do with it.
Because he can't read it. He wants to read it.
It has everything. You did not fully fund the contract for ENCODE.
He just wants to read it. He just wants to read it.
You did not fully fund it.
He just wants to read it. Counsel, let me, let's go back to something Mayor just said. I use maintenance. If you want, I won't use maintenance. You give me the money, I'll go hire a contractor at $50 an hour to change a light bulb, or take, take care of a toilet or whatever, or some minor painting. That's what you're saying. I can't use maintenance to work on a police station. So, I need money, then, to hire a contractor to come and do these little bitty jobs. I don't have anybody that does maintenance within my department. But going back to why we want access only? Five or six police officers weren't put into the retirement system. If we'd had access we had before, we would've discovered it. They were taking money out of some of the officers' pay, but they weren't remitting it to the pension board in Baton Rouge.
Internal control problems with...
Then it talks about health insurance. Open enrollment for health insurance in 2000, this past year, my secretary was allowed to see all the employees for the police department on health insurance. Four, four former police employees that have been gone as much as a year, they were still taking out the police department's budget to the two, almost $22,000 health insurance payments. So, we paid health insurance for former employees almost $22,000. That's why we want access to read-only. We don't want to change any numbers.
You have access to everything.
We could have, am I finished, Mayor? Would that be nice? You've complained before. You've had your attorney come to me, and, you know, we don't have blown order in the department, because we don't do anything, the police department, but you're the worst, worst, worst offender of this. So, if we would've had access to ENCODE, we discovered they were taking out health insurance premiums for the police department. That was $22,000 of your money that was wasted, folks.
Wasn't it returned?
Then we found out, as I said, previous...
It was paid back. It was paid back. You keep saying that.
No, it wasn't paid back. Show me where it's paid. You keep saying it's paid back.
It was paid back.
No, no, as, as the last meeting, she said she misspoke, and that she said it was paid back, but she wasn't quite sure, is what, what happened.
The mayor keeps charging the police department for Mr. Bures. I don't mind paying for bills that we using, for, and we use them occasionally.
There was a credit.
But we finally got some invoices, where we got charged for a council meeting. So, I want to get to see those invoices after making a request to it, and we got it much later, we paid Mr. Bures to be at this meeting for $700-something dollars. Why should the police department pay for that? These are services that we provide. Can I finish?
No.
No, I can't finish.
Well, this is about the 10th time we've heard this.
Well, yeah, until it's resolved, it's gonna be 11, 12, or 13 times.
You're talking about history that can't be resolved.
That's right. It can't be resolved. You're right, Ms. Bures.
You think if you say it 100 times, it's gonna make a difference?
You're right. It can't be resolved, because we can't have access, see what's going on, how money's being stolen from the police department.
So, continue to just drive us all crazy.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's right. That's fine. Thank you. Ms. Lulu, you hear those figures?
For 2016, the firm of Linda Height-Lulu CPA was paid $114,599. And for 2017 thus far, it was $54,295.
Wait, wait. You admitted at a council meeting, Ms. Lulu, you were paid over $140,000 at one of the council meetings in 16. Did you not?
I have no idea what was said.
You said you were paid over $144,000 at one of the council meetings. And what's the figure that you billed the city for? Whether you billed it in 16 and 17, it's for services in 16.
I added up all of the accounts for all of the departments that have accounting, which is me, my firm. It was 114, almost 115 for 2016.
Okay, 17 so far?
$54,000.
That's all you billed the city for? $54,000 for 17?
Want me to give you a second? Yes.
There's no other outstanding bills?
I did not say that. I haven't billed past August.
Through August? So, you still have bills pending, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Linda, let me ask you a question. You said 2017, you're at 54, but the 2017 budget that y'all asking us to amend has a total of $132,000 in accounting.
Okay, I didn't add that up. So, if you say so, okay.
Well, it's, it's in your, in your budget sheet.
Well, I didn't, I didn't add up all my budget numbers.
Well, 132 and 54 is a huge difference. And especially if you're saying you still have not billed. So, is it the 132, and you still haven't billed since August?
The 132 is what I was expecting as of December 31st, 2016 period of time.
Okay. So, if you're at 54 now, or as of 2017, but you said you haven't billed since August. So, August, September, October, November, December, that's five months. At $80,000, that's $15,000 a month, if you're gonna come to the 132 that you're projected on your budget that you're asking us to amend. It's extremely exorbitant. Maybe I'm the only one that seems a little expensive.
Have you, have you called or gotten records released from other cities to see how much they spend?
I have not, no, ma'am.
Have you priced, have you gotten bids and priced out how much it would be to have work done in the city to get these services covered?
I have not, Mayor. But if you look at previous budgets that go back to 2013, they were allocated at about 48, and they managed to stay under the 48. But it seems since recently, we have tripled the money that's allocated. So, I'm just going off the figures that she presented to us in the budget. So, if you're telling me you're at 54, but your budget amendment says 132, well, that's a big difference.
But here again, it's the council, when, when we are trying to give the residents real numbers and real costs, you cannot do unrealistic numbers and costs. I remember it distinctly when they, you amended a budget where you stripped out partial retirement, federal income tax, FICA, Medicare, things that you have to pay for. I remember distinctly showing that we have ENCODE, here's our contract, this is the real cost. Oh, no, oh, no, you go back, and we're only gonna spend this much. Then, we can have real costs that says, you know, it, it, it's, it's unfathomable to me that we present you real costs, and you keep rejecting it over and over and over again. So, when you talk about what has to be funded, and this council is just really good about asking, "Where's my city planner? Where's the CBO? Where's my this? And I want this now, and I want this. But it doesn't seem to budget for the city planner. It doesn't seem to budget fully for building officials, which are mandated by the state law. It doesn't fully budget for anything. There are also offices that have to be budgeted for that this council has not budgeted appropriately. So you know where all those expenses come? Because no matter what, we have a state statute, we have competing laws, we're going to have to fund them. So I have to pay them in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of this community, in order to get the financials that they want. West Wego, who has the same or smaller population than we do, they pay over $200,000 a year for their CPA for what they're doing. They also have an additional city clerk and assistant clerk who helps with those, and they have another clerk that helps. So when you want to talk about what the costs were, so if you want to talk about past costs on accounting also, under Councilman Johnston's father's, when he was mayor, his father hired a full-time CPA accountant, bookkeeper, whatever you want to know, but it cost $50,000 plus that individual got paid--
I paid $2,000 more for folk--
Wait, 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 wait. Got paid health insurance benefits, et cetera. Then that person had a full-time assistant who got benefits. So not just the prior administration under Vinnie Masca, but the one before that was playing upwards of $90,000 at that time in order to do accounting. But somehow you want this administration to do 48. So when you want to, if you want to be realistic, so I would think that if you want to be able to put a budget together and you want to say what is wrong and what is right, go and get some data and get some facts, maybe talk to a CPA and talk to lawyers, and go get some prices and then see what is going to be realistic. And I can also tell you, the format, what we found, the format of the budget, the format of the financials, the condition of the financials, the conditions of N-code, the condition of everything, grant files, grant files that we still can't get from the chief, et cetera, those were deplorable. Wait, those were deplorable. And we've had to move, and we're still doing it cheaper than like-sized cities that are within Jefferson Parish.
Incorrect, Mayor. Our budget for the city, folks, is right at $6 million. We're comparable to West Wego. Their budget's over 15 million. So we're not comparable as far as income and expenses. 15 million? They twice the size of us in budget. Maybe not in size.
Well, I'll take half of what they get allocated for accounting because I'd really appreciate it.
Well, they have other income too. They get money from Boomtown and they get money from traffic cameras. But over 15 million compared to our 6 million. Let me finish. When I was talking before about our audit was incorrect in 16, I filed a complaint with the licensing board for CPAs against Ms. Lulu and one of the CPAs with a auditing firm. I understand, Ms. Lulu, you recently sent some material into the licensing board, is that correct? What I'm getting at, and I'd like an answer, has any of the time that you spent to answer the questions to the licensing board been charged either to the Harahan Police Department or to any department within the city of Harahan?
No.
No. It's on your own time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other thing, now that you want to abide by the ordinance to give us access only, Ms. Lulu said in the past, she takes the numbers out of our software package that the mayor is complaining about and does a second set of books on a spreadsheet. Does that make any sense? At $105 an hour? So is, what I'm getting at, you told us that. You've already given it to us.
It's not a second set of books. I put all of the numbers from that--
So you take it off the software package and you do it all--
Can I finish responding to you?
I'm speaking to you, Mayor?
I'm just trying to intercede.
No, 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 you don't need to interject. Ms. Lulu can answer my question. I'm talking to her. Thank you. So what I'm getting at is because y'all don't want to comply with ordinance 1839 and grant us full access, is something else being changed, the way finances are being done in the city? So we won't see what's going on? Yes, I know, Ms. Lulu.
I decline to answer.
Decline to answer. What makes me suspect that something's going on? All right.
Then I recommend you go with that forensic audit you were requesting.
Oh, I wish this council would do it.
Go for it.
I wish y'all would appropriate the money, do a forensic audit on our books for the whole city. It'd be amazing. Can you tell me what our balance was for the police department, 1231 of 17?
The books aren't closed yet.
Pardon? I'm just asking what you say the balance is. That's all I didn't say with the books closed.
But it's like the books aren't closed.
I didn't ask about the books. I said, what is the balance right now in the Harahan Police Department's books for 2017? I know it's not closed. I'm asking for what you say the balance is.
Well, I had what I was thinking the balance was going to be in October, as of October, what I thought we were going to head up being. But I know you spent quite a bit of money since then, so I do not know for sure what is going to be going on in your department. And I did print--
Well, how do you know we spent some money, Ms. Lulu?
Because I saw your purchase orders on the last day of the year for $112,000.
You know, a couple of months back, when we purchased some cars and I said, we issued purchase orders for 10 cars, one for eight and one for two, when we issued the purchase order for payment, you had to never tell us? Well, I didn't know it was an encumbrance. When we place a purchase order, which I approve, it goes into the software package as an encumbrance. Means that this money has been allocated for this expense. When I submitted the purchase order several months after the cars became available, Ms. Lulu said, I had no idea y'all issued this.
And I didn't. And this time I was--
Well, you don't look at the encumbrances. You look at the bottom line.
I specifically looked.
$105 an hour.
I would have to go to every single line item and look at the encumbrance for every single line item for every department.
Okay.
And you saw how long it took me just to find single line items for my name. My God.
Yeah, okay. Hey, Mayor Muselli, did you have the occasion? We issued a bunch of purchase officers, purchase orders in the last week of December. We felt we had some money left over. Did you call any vendors and tell them not to sell us products?
No.
You never called any vendor?
Because tell them not to sell you products.
Yes, that we issued a purchase order.
No.
You didn't call a dealership in Baton Rouge?
No.
It's funny, we issued a purchase order for two cars and we talked to the salesman about honoring the purchase order. I said, oh, no, your mayor from Harahan called. Now, who would have this access, right, folks? And said not to sell it to them because--
I didn't say not to issue it.
Oh, now you say, wait.
No. No, no. I didn't say not to issue it. I didn't say not to issue it because--
I said you called--
Oh, no, no, Chief.
To play on words, folks, that's what we go through every--
Chief, wait, wait. You have gotten one accusation in after another.
Because they're true.
What I have learned is I better listen because I only get parts of stories from you.
My stuff's in emails, emails in black and white. You're going to understand everything I'm saying.
On December, on-- Chief, these, this is just so petty, what you're doing at every meeting and manipulating the time.
Because we can't get answers when I send you emails. I sent you an email about getting access only to read only, and you won't answer it. So if I have no other venue to go other than a council meeting to ask you, and we still don't get the answers. And the answers we get are incorrect usually.
Chief, it was you who asked for salary line items to be used to buy for cars.
This is altogether different, folks. We're talking about two different, two different issues. This was earlier. This is something that was issued in the last week of December. And when we called the dealership, the dealership said, your mayor called and said, don't sell you anything, you don't have any money. Now-- You don't know where I was getting the money from.
Wait, were you, did you call me?
Do I have to call you?
Did you record the conversation I had with the vendor? I don't think so.
Oh, so you're saying the dealership lied? You didn't call them.
Right.
I have called--
Right, right.
Chief, you have said, you have get a little excited and do not tell complete stories. So I am trying to clarify that, Chief.
So you did admit calling the dealership?
No, no, Chief. I'm, you're not going to, this is not you doing an inquisition and you get to sit there.
Well, if you tell the truth, it wouldn't have to be that way.
You have, you know what? I will address this after. I've got to let you get all this off your chest again.
Off my chest.
So that you can get it done. Let's finish.
So there's a lot of things in 17 and in 16 for health insurance that we were billed for with the access we do have in our software package. And a lot of discrepancies. In 16, we billed 13 times. In 17, one payment was for $19, and the largest was $22,000 for one month. So we asked our health insurance provider to give us the bills. Well, they won't provide it to us. They gave it to the mayor, and the mayor will not provide it to us. They keep hiding money, folks. When I asked you to, if you would send that information, you have it. The insurance company sent it to you, and you won't provide it to us, correct? And then your answer was, forward your noted discrepancies, because we feel there's some discrepancies in the health insurance that the police department was charged for, and you want to know what the discrepancies are before you give us the information.
If you have discrepancies, I'd like to know what they are.
Well, we'd like to see what the payments--
Why wouldn't you share that information?
Well, we will once we get the information, tell you what the discrepancies are.
Chief, share the information. Just ask the same way.
You know where the information is, Mayor? It's in the software package and N-code.
No, it is not.
So you go download it and look at it yourself, and you'll see the difference.
You have, Chief, we have offered to give you access to East Central so that you could see everything for your department as far as Humana and for the health insurance. We have offered to sit with your employees. You've refused to let them even talk to human resources.
I guess so when you tried to get them to sign paperwork to get them out the pension fund because HR didn't put them in the pension. When an officer comes to work for us, folks, the only thing he or she has going is to be in a statewide pension system. If they leave here, they can take that pension with another department. But they weren't entered into the system. It took us probably five or six months to get it corrected. And they can say it's our fault. However, before you get into the pension system, you have to take a physical. The physical's done by a local medical company. It's sent to my secretary in an envelope. It's somewhat confidential. The pension board wants to see it as a pre-existing condition because if there is an officer, if something happens with a pre-existing condition, they won't get a pension. When we went to check, two of those offices, that paperwork was still in the folder at City Hall. So those two offices, it was after six months, the department had to pay what, $400? How much is it? $400 on each to get a second physical. So there's another waste of $800 or $900 of your money to have a second physical. And that's why we want access to read only. We don't want to change any numbers. With some of those mistakes that were made, we make mistakes, I make mistakes, I'm not going to say I'm perfect. But if we have access to read only on the financials, we could have caught some of these mistakes. That's why we keep asking for it. But they won't give it to us.
All that is in his department, correct?
I'm suspect of why they won't give it to us.
All that's in his department access.
Chief, when you and I met about your budget, didn't you tell me at one point y'all did have access to the insurance?
No. What happened--
To see--
In May--
Okay, but y'all don't have it now.
No, we're just doing open enrollment to have access.
Who took it away?
I'm not sure, folks. I did have access during open enrollment and that's not to be, who was enrolled and what was being paid.
Okay.
This would have answered the question as to how much we've been paying.
So have you received that access back?
No. Okay. I'll close on this, folks.
Let me give you, I was just sitting here, let me give you one example. You know, why computer access is something that clearly is not detailed.
It is.
Payroll's a good example. So people have a justifiable expectation of privacy with doctors that are taking care of their paycheck. You know, that, that is what you say--
Can, we can't hear. I'm sorry.
You know, that's the kind of sensitive information that is usually security--
Mike?
Usually subject to, you know, security requirements and all certain people, supervisors get to look at it. You know, I'm sure something else will have heard of me on this, but that strikes me because I was, when you start talking about payroll and the health insurance--
The police department, we deal with sensitive information every day of the week.
That's one thing that strikes me as something that, you know, a computer expert who knows security issues would look at before he grants levels of access to various city employees. So I can understand that there are security concerns in that, but we need to work on those so that the stuff that--
The chief needs--
He can, you know, I would think that your, your need to know about the health insurance deductions of employees who are not your direct subordinates is something that is an unreasonable expectation. You know, they have, they have an expectation of privacy, and you don't have the budgetary control over that particular department. So that's something that your--
But make sure you're just for employees that are no longer here, that's the problem.
But Chief, I'm just saying, I don't think it's as, it's as simple as flip a switch and I can look at everything. I think there are nuanced things.
Of course.
And I don't pretend to be a security expert on this. That's why you need the software people to really, you know, give it right.
In closing, folks, Crime Stoppers of the greater New Orleans area has a campaign going on right now. As Sheriff Pinto said earlier, we all can cut down on car burglars. There's a campaign going on. Signs will be out. We'll put some on the highways next week and have some literature we can hand out tonight. Lock it. How hard is it to press that button? The majority of these car burglars, and we have them in Harahan too, people go through the streets at night time. They're on the inside of the street by the sidewalk. They're going down late at night at stalk. If they see a car coming, they duck down, whether it's a police car or not. And as soon as the car passes, they go back to work. We had 45 last year. Five guns were taken along with other valuables. Lock the car. Press the button, please. Thank you all, and have a happy and safe morning.
Chief, before you sit down, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Since we're on the subject of the state of the police department. I was told that you bought a machine gun at the last day of the year. Is that true?
No, we bought-- Was it four? Yeah, we bought four, yeah.
Four machine guns?
Correct.
And--
Patrol riders, but not machine guns.
And I thought you bought a $13,000 machine gun.
No. No, there was four, five of them that were like $12,000 or $13,000. Wouldn't one--
So it was--
Make your allegations. Let's hear them.
No, 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 I'm, Chief, I'm asking. But does the city of Harahan have machine guns?
We have some, yes, ma'am, we do.
And how many do you have? I'm just trying to see if what I--
We have a special response. We'll put everything out to the public. Y'all call, we call. Safest city in Louisiana in 2016, second safest city in the state in '15, and we want to make it that way and keep it that way. That's why I live here. That's why you live here. If you want to attack everything that we buy--
I'm not, Chief.
No, no, let me finish. If you want to attack everything that we buy to keep our officers safe, their safety's number one. Paramount. They come to work, they work 12 hours, they go home fatigued, no scratches. But I bought some guns a couple of years ago, sidearms, the same pistol that the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office uses. As you heard the sheriff, we work very close with them. I look for the future. If something, God forbid, happens and we on the scene, somebody runs out of bullets, the magazine that fits in these semi-automatic is the same. We could pass them on. God forbid an officer's down or a deputy's down. You pick up their gun, it's the same gun we all train with. No difference. It's all about safety. Your safety, our officer's safety.
Yep.
I bought 10 new cars this past year. We have 16 officers in patrol. By the end of March, we should have 16. Every one of our officers will have a new car no more than three years old, never heard of before, thanks to Paul Johnson. Thanks to Paul Johnson, our district councilman, for buying the pistols for us. Know the machine guns? We bought them. We have a special response team, and they practice in these schools. You read about it, in these small towns, it happens, these active shooters. Hopefully, it never happens here. We're prepared. The sheriff's office will back us up and come with us, but our people are here on the street now with the equipment they need to protect you, our students, and ourselves.
Yep. So can I ask another question?
I'm answering it. Yeah, we bought some. Yes, correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I guess the other question is that this council has said several times that they would give you whatever you say you need for your department. And my question is, given that information, why have you not given your men a raise?
We were, there's a tax package coming up in April. We'll be--
But in the past, they--
The money, because the money we have left over each year when we find out--
Doesn't cover--
Doesn't cover raises. Our biggest expense, folks, is payroll and payroll expenses.
What would it be to give your men a raise?
The money, we don't have-- If we get a financial statement on a regular basis, I'd know if I could give them a raise, you know?
I think I could figure that out.
We believe, like I said, 2016--
I would have taken that $111,000 if you--
Pardon?
That was $111,000.
So Chief, this is--
Remember what I said. 2016, the first time I received a financial statement, not just me, the majority of this council, was in October. me, the majority of this council, was in October, then went through July. That doesn't tell me where we're at. I try to react...
So Chief, this is my question, I'm asking...
Can I finish?
No, I'm asking...
I can't, I'm gonna finish.
No, you can't, because I'm asking questions.
If we don't get financials in a timely fashion, and the mayor's made statements publicly, anything that's left in your department, she takes. When you pay a finance director that's allocated 48...
I guess you're afraid to answer my questions is the thing.
And you pay him over $100,000 in one year, and almost $200,000 in a second year.
You don't want to hear what I have to say.
Where do you think the money's coming from, folks? Our, your police department.
So Chief, my other question is...
There's no way I can give pay raises to our employees not knowing where we're at. There's a military package coming, and it will address payroll. The other thing is longevity. Harahan always has been known as a step stone. Police officers start here, and they stay on two or three years, and they go to other departments? Well, with increase in health insurance and other increases, lack of overtime, lack of details, officers aren't staying that long. We're trying to do something to keep them for longevity.
So Chief, can I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am, you go ahead.
So you got two new officers last year, correct?
Correct.
And so I would have thought that revenues would have gone up, given that you had two new officers and a full complement of men.
When you say revenues go up, what do you mean?
Whatever revenues the HBD brings in.
Fingerprints?
Whatever, tickets, fingerprints, bonds, enforcement, enforcement, Chief, not, I'm not asking you to do a quota, I'm talking about enforcement.
We're doing enforcement.
So you have two new officers and your revenues are flat, and from 2014, when you took office, the revenues were 276,000. Last year, 209,000 with two more officers, just saying.
Just saying, we didn't bring enough revenue into court, the mayor's...
So this is the last thing, this is the last thing that I want to say, no, I want to...
No, you asked a question, trying to answer it, ma'am.
You have not shut up for 45 minutes.
The problem is, we've got, every officer, both our reserves and regulars, have to attend 20 hours plus in-service training. Got four officers on each platoon, they're not always four working. Somebody's either out sick, they get vacation time, and they go in a class.
This is the last thing I want to say, Chief. Rather than give your men a raise, you have chosen to spend money on drones, machine guns, 16 new cars, guns to replace guns that were less than two years old, ammunition for those guns, radar, tasers, motorcycles that don't get used except on very special occasions, and God knows what else.
It's all incorrect.
That's all I'm gonna say.
The cars, the majority of them were bought from Paul Johnston, the handguns were bought by Paul Johnston.
Your men deserve a raise.
The drone was $700. Is that really gonna do a pay raise? You and the mayor can do whatever y'all want to criticize, we got a safe city, I'm gonna do what I need to keep it. The money that you're talking about is not enough to give our officers a pay raise. Now, if you want to address, you're gonna be on board when we put the pay raise proposal up?
I would have loved to have been able to carve out $111,000, $112,000 that the police department did.
If we knew the money was there, maybe we could do it, but it's hidden.
You could have put it in your budget, you never did. You never asked for it.
The money that's in the budget, you've hidden and stolen from me.
Oh, that's no one has...
Well, how can we have the money left over at the end of the year and the mayor takes it to pay other bills?
No one takes it to pay other bills.
A finance director that's allocated 48 gets paid 144, one, then over 200 the next.
Chief, can we move on with the meeting?
All right. We're about to go to address the council. I just, that took, thank you, that took an hour and 10 minutes, and that's just out of the council meeting, so...
But if he had answers, he wouldn't have to do that.
So this is what the city administration is dealing with hours and hours and hours of this. We will now address the council. Anyone would like to address, please note, state your name and address. You have three minutes, and we are, let us remember, let's try and bring back our decorum. I do not like the way that these conversations go.
Great. Mayor, Council, Ed Kraus, 424... How about now? There you go. You're good.
I lost it.
We had the money, we could... Ed Kraus, 424 Soniat. Let me just make one statement. As some of you know, I'm the former chief information officer, pro bono, for the city of Harahan, and I could say that in Ncode, it takes about three minutes to make the change that the chief requested. And it's read-only for all departments, so we can say, we gotta create different levels, different login IDs, Ms. Baloney. Now, let me just, a couple of questions, and I'm gonna get into the details of the Soniat plantation later, right? We're gonna have an ordinance come up. Mayor, I guess the week of the freeze, which was pretty substantial to Harahan, the governor of Louisiana declared a state of emergency. Most, all businesses closed, cities closed, whatever, but Harahan stayed open, which in my opinion, as a citizen, jeopardized employees. I'm not sure if you got much business, or who came in, or whatever, but can you explain why Harahan stayed open?
I'm just gonna let you address the council, Mr. Kraus, I'll address everything later.
So you're demanding answers from anyone else, but you don't want to answer our questions? Any answers from anyone on that issue?
I have to say, I was quite shocked to hear that they were open too.
I was too. I mean, even former Representative Julie Quinn, who we were, I was communicating with on Facebook, slipped and fell that first day, hurt herself, several other people did as well. I think I can answer it for you, so let me take an approach. So I think the reason is, is because you did not want to pay overtime to the police and fire department. Could that be the answer? No? I think it is. So I mean, it's the only logical one that I could think of. So I'm throwing it out there, is that the reason why? I mean, in the past, in the past, you did not want to pay overtime to the police and the fire department. And now you're gonna keep the city open for an entire week, employees in danger, et cetera, because you didn't want to pay this overtime. It just, it's ridiculous to me. The second thing is, during that week, we were without drinking water in the city. Other cities provided water, Kenner provided water to the citizens, whatever. I communicated personally with a number of senior citizens, they couldn't leave their homes to get water, so I personally delivered it to them. Was Harahan providing water to senior citizens?
Because we were open, Mr. Kraus, we could respond to phone calls of anybody who was in need.
Did we give, did we distribute water to any citizens? So here's, the answer is no. And so going forward, I was in communication with four of the council, and what we've decided in the future, we will coordinate to get water from businesses, I'll personally buy water, and we will distribute it, and we'll personally deliver it to senior citizens. I cannot believe that we let this go by. And city of friendship in Harahan, it's unbelievable. The last thing I'm gonna say is, you personally asked me to send you comments in a letter, or email, or whatever form, and I did. Issues that I think are wrong with the city, that can be improved, whatever, zero response. I sent reminders very politely, no response, no comment. I got some calls from some of the council members that gave me their input and feedback, no response. And I think the important thing with that is, and I was asking about one of the issues, is why did we really veto...
We'll make a motion for two more minutes.
For how many more?
Two.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler for two more minutes, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, motion passes.
Why did we veto something like the Soniat plantation that can bring in revenue to this city? Why did we really do it? You know, we said ambiance. Well, a building that's rotten and fallen down, how's that helping the ambiance of Carolyn? The second one was, well, the police won't respond. That's ridiculous.
Mr. Kraus, I will answer a question that you are presenting right now, because it directly relates to you. You asked, why did I veto? One of the reasons, which I articulated very clearly when I released it, I released that information to you and to the press and to everyone. I didn't hide it, so that was my answer. But what was poignant is that you came up and you were very adamant for this rezoning, and you had, you had every single good reason why it was a great idea.
And it still is.
And I remember going home, and I woke up in the middle of the night, and it, something kept bothering me and bothering me and bothering me, and you know what it was? It was your words. It was your words exactly, because you kept saying how wonderful it was, and then at the very end, you said, but I don't know if I'd want it if it was on my street.
No, I did not, ma'am.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
No, 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 ma'am.
And that...
You're putting words in my mouth.
No.
I did not say, I don't know if I'd want it on my street.
Yes, you did.
I mean, but that would be a different circumstance, that would be a totally different issue.
Because Soniat is so much farther, because Soniat's so much farther from Carolyn.
You're putting words in my mouth.
But what, but more importantly...
You're putting words in my mouth.
But more importantly...
I have the two minutes, I have the two minutes, okay?
Okay.
So your two answers, add to the minutes, because I need my time, she took it away. There is no good reason why.
Can I have a motion for two more minutes?
And, you know, you...
I'll second.
You...
I have a motion for two more minutes by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor.
We spend more time on getting motions.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, motion passes.
So based on that, Mayor, in my letter to you, which I'll make public after tonight, I asked you, what is your revenue generation plan? What is your plan to bring in new revenue to the city? Do we have one? Can you make it public? What does it look like? Because I'll tell you, what we put Mr. Maroni through for eight months, and the cost, and every, jumping through every hoop in the world, to get to the point of you knowing you were gonna veto it all along, who is gonna want to come to the city? Who? I can't think of a bill that would want to go through that. So let somebody else talk, but I will be back when we're addressing about Soniat plantation.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
John Ream, 3 Rentpass. Different subject, Wood Materials, the company that's behind the levee, operating an illegal compost and mulching facility at 6148 River Road, has two different zoning areas. One is Jefferson Parish, Zoned M2 Industrial, where the compost area started, the compost has started, and one in Harahan, which is Zoned NU Bachelor District, Non-Urban Bachelor District. Dumping trees, composting, mulching, and manufacturing on a bachelor in Harahan is illegal, according to the Harahan Bachelor Law. Residents of Harahan are requesting all residents from Metairie, Jefferson, River Ridge, Kenner, and New Orleans to help protect the residents of Harahan by not allowing your trees to be dumped at Wood Materials Bachelor in Harahan. Please support the city of Harahan and its residents by inquiring from the tree companies where they dump their trees before they hire them. There are tree companies who do not dump trees on the Bachelor in Harahan. The following tree companies are not located in Harahan and should stop illegally dumping trees on the Bachelor in Harahan. A Perfect Cut and TreeCo are located in Metairie. Bartlett Tree, located in Jefferson. Louisiana Tree Company, located in River Ridge. Risk Hoover Tree and Lakeview Demolition are located in Kenner. Tree Service, located in New Orleans. Waste Management Dumping Dumpsters of Trees, they're located in New Orleans. Quality Tree Service, located in Kenner, is illegally dumping trees and purchasing illegal compost. Pickup trucks with trailers are illegally dumping trees and purchasing illegal compost. Delta Soil in Gretna and Delta Sod on Central Avenue in Jefferson are purchasing illegal compost manufactured on the Bachelor in Harahan. In the court case, Wood Materials, which would have sued the city of Harahan because Harahan cited them, the court case, Harahan is seeking a full trial. The Harahan residents will be able to attend the full trial and will be notified of the court date, and we will take measures to notify everybody we can when there is a court date. We did have 16 people show up in that little crowded courtroom that we had before, and there'll be a lot more people at this next thing. So any comments, any questions from you guys?
And we'll be there to help support your neighborhood too.
Okay, we need, we need the support, the city, and everybody needs the support, and the residents, we need the residents' support, and this important thing, because that company's operating illegally behind the levee. So appreciate y'all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evelyn Ream.
Concerning Wood Materials Illegal Compost Facility on the Bachelor in Harahan. Wood Materials... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm...
You went too fast.
That was short.
That was quick.
I didn't even gotta say it.
Because I'm not as quick, okay, you can start, thank you.
Okay, all right, so here we go, take two. Concerning Wood Materials Illegal Compost on the Bachelor in Harahan. Wood Materials was aware from the 2012 Louisiana Department of Agriculture BMP permit, which states, your facility must comply with all applicable federal, state, and local regulations and ordinances. Was aware of the Harahan Bachelor Law from 2010 Harahan Mayor Paul Johnston. Was aware that the August 29, 2012 DEQ Hurricane Isaac storm debris was temporary on the Bachelor in Harahan. Was aware on November 28, 2012, that DEQ issued a stop order to cease accepting Hurricane Isaac storm debris on the Bachelor in Harahan. But Wood Materials continued accepting tree debris on the Bachelor in Harahan, knowing it is against the Harahan Bachelor Law. Wood Materials thinks if you've been doing something illegally for five years, and no one has stopped you, that you can continue. How about that one, huh? It has not been five years, according to Google and satellite pictures. Public records and City of Harahan citing Wood Materials in February 2016. Wood Materials never held a meeting, never posted flyers on doors, never advertised in the paper, never put a sign on the levee, and never received written permission, but hid their illegal facility behind the levee and trees from the public. The Harahan Bachelor Law was put in place long ago to protect the Harahan residents. Concerning the New Hall Road and abandoned the Old Hall Road. In regards to Wood Materials DEQ Compliance Order and Notice of Potential Penalties, State of Louisiana, Division of Administration Law, Department of Environmental Quality in the Matter of Wood Materials. A telephone status conference was held on December 14, 2017. Participating in the conference were Council for DEQ and Council for Wood Materials. The parties advised that settlement in the matter was probable, and requested additional time to continue settlement negotiations. The parties agreed to conduct an additional telephone status conference on March 15, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. An agreement between LDEQ and Wood Materials was signed on November 30, 2017, which states, the parties hereby future agree that these dispute resolution discussions shall be extended and shall be concluded by May 22, 2018. Wood Materials' expected project completion date on the New Hall Road and abandoned the Old Hall Road is mid-April, according to the Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority East. And we thank Commissioner Herbert Miller for making us aware of that, when we asked him to check in it. Actually, Herbert Miller passed, I forgot what you call it, something to be able to get that date. So that date is now supposed to be completed mid-April. So thank you for listening, and I just wanted to update y'all on what happened in December at that conference call.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chaddeling?
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive.
Oh, wait, hold on just a second, I just did something wrong with this. There you go.
I'm gonna address the council, but I want to make sure the residents that are here are listening. When Chief's up there talking, a lot of them are getting aggravated with how long he's taking to get his point across. I understand 100%, this is a long meeting, it shouldn't be this long. The problem is, what the citizens don't understand is, you can have a conversation with this administration, and it's like talking to a wall. Things can't get done, you can't get answers, so you want to come to a public forum to state what you have to state. That's the reason it takes so long, he has to do this every month. I know that firsthand. You could call here, make a complaint, nothing's done about it. Not for me, I'm Eric Chaddeling, I could care less, you could hold grudges, it doesn't matter to me. I know citizens of Harahan who call here, make complaints about drainage issues, nothing's done about it. I know citizens that call here, make complaints about sidewalks, nothing's done about it. I know citizens that call here, make complaints about belighted housing, nothing's done about it. That's why people come here and make their speech, so everyone knows these comments and complaints are going on. Any one of y'all want to call me? I'll tell y'all the complaints. I'm not here to do it at this meeting, y'all have a lot of business to handle. I know this firsthand from conversations here. When Paul Johnston was here, and he had a full-time CPA and accountants and all, when a council requested something, they got it. Police chief requested something, he got it. That's 15 years ago. Pay goes up a little bit, I don't think they were paying anywhere near what y'all paying here. I'm just making a point across, it just seems like a lot of citizens are aggravated with the chief when he gets up there and talks, you know, which, it is long, I understand. I understand your questions you're asking about, you know, buying guns and stuff like that, I understand them questions. That's not questions that has to be at a council meeting. We can have casual conversations outside a council meeting, that does not have to be here. We don't need to put everybody on the spot every time something happens. I could come here every week and talk for hours. That's not what we're here for. Let's make this city better, let's move forward, work together. I mean, it's a shame he sits here and says, I can't trust the mayor, I can't meet with her, and, you know, one-on-one. I know the feeling. You go have a conversation with her, you come out, she don't remember the conversation. It needs to be done at a public forum. Thank you.
You just said it did. Exactly.
My name's Eliu Lucas. I have my extra ears here because I'm hard to hear. I live at the corner of Doshan and... In Windsor.
92.
But I've had a drainage problem there that I reported to the mayor, and she had copies sent to all the councilmen. So far, the mayor and Councilman Benton is the only one that's had, given me the courtesy of finding out what in the world was going on. To date, the mayor made a... I have met with city engineer, Mr. Calvin Hopmire. Without going into detail, I believe he agrees with me that there is a failure in the street. This failure is causing damage to my property. Now, the question is, whose fault is it, and who's responsible for this? The mayor maintains that it's my responsibility, that I should fix it. Needless to say, I disagree. Now, should she be right, I cannot fix my property until that street is repaired, because the ground has fallen away from the concrete, the concrete has failed. Now, you folks have put me in a catch-22 position. I'm damned if I do, and I'm damned if I don't. If I repair the concrete, it's gonna be of no avail, because the ground is just gonna wash away like it has before. This also exposes me to lawsuits in case someone gets damaged. There's approximately a four-inch settlement between my slab and my driveway caused by this. And I don't know if you folks intend to do this or not, anything, but I appreciate you letting me know at your earliest convenience, so I'll know what I have to do. Thank you very much.
You live in the corner of Doshan and...
You said Doshan and Windsor?
Doshan and...
16 Doshan Drive.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Lucas.
I think I'll be pretty brief right now. It's almost 9:30, which means that the council's been in session for two hours, there's a lot of business yet to do, and 9:30, for those of us who have a job every day and get up and go to work every day, which I do, and I start looking at the time, I start thinking, what kind of performance am I gonna be able to put in at the office tomorrow, you know? So one thing that really bugs the heck out of me is that the city council meetings start at 7:00. at 7:30. That I hate to be that way, but at least for me, and I think for most working peoples, that's ridiculously late to be starting a meeting in the evening. 6 o'clock should be the absolute late. I know people have to get home from work, but, you know, an hour, if most people get off at 5:00, say, an hour, you can get here. So that's one thing. So, if we started at 6:00, and, no disrespect to the chief, but the chief uses up roughly an hour or more at the beginning of each meeting with his issues, let's put it that way, which you and I and everybody in this room, I think, knows are not going to be settled at any meeting here, they're not going to be settled until, if they are even then, settled until there's an election. So, I don't see any reason, the chief ought to just, for his report when it comes to that, unless he's got something really important, he'll just say, "Same report as last time." "I'm totally at odds with the mayor, and she should respond, and I'm totally at odds with the chief," and then we can go on and save more than an hour. Look at all the people sitting here, and look how many man-hours of time has been wasted this evening, wasted in the sense that we've heard it before, and it's not going to do any good. So I think those two things are very, very important. If we move the meeting up till 6:00, and the chief showed a little mercy on us until the next election, then I think, you know, it would be reasonable. But when you do this thing, then ordinary working people say, "The heck with going to the city council meeting, unless there's something very specific," which there is, like the Colonial, you know, the Soniat Corner there, the Carolyn and Jefferson Highway, which is just a few yards down from me, and which I happen to disagree with the early speaker. I think it's a terrible idea, and I've said so before. And we keep hearing about, and I guess we'll raise this later, but we keep hearing about, "But it's going to bring in all this money." Has anybody seen a business plan? Has anybody seen a business plan? You know? And I'll guarantee you, that's something that should be necessary to be presented, a business plan, that would show how much revenue they're going to have, and what the tax revenue that the city would get. Without that, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to address the council? We will now close. Address the council. Approval of the minutes? We already did the December 7th, so...
Yeah, I don't have those on the agenda. Reading of the minutes...
Well, December 7th was at the 21st meeting, right?
Yeah, they're not on the agenda. Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on December 21st.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Before we approve, though, I'd like to...did you get a copy where you had to make some changes, or...
The December 21st, I got the PDF. I no longer get the Word document, I guess.
And what were the changes that were...
What were the changes?
That you have to add? I'm just...
I know, well, the lawsuits, number one, have to be added at the bottom. I didn't read through the entire set of minutes, but, you know, certain little adjustments just have to be made.
Did you ask for the...
I've asked for the Word document.
Did you send the recommendations to...
No, I'm the municipal clerk. I should be able to edit the minutes, as it's my job duty, set by RS 33421, another job duty, that I am responsible for the minutes, so I should be able to edit the minutes. And I believe that the City of Harrahann should have a copy of the Word document, rather than just Ms. Judy Johnson's personal computer having the copy of the Word document. I believe the city should have the Word document.
When, I'm just asking, did you send her the corrections that you noted?
I'm not going to go back and forth. I'm the municipal clerk. I have every...I have all the...
Right in all the authority.
She should get the Word. She requested the Word document to make changes.
To edit the documents. Why am I going to spend my entire day going back and forth with Ms. Johnson?
I'm sorry, so, she...wait, I need to clarify. She receives a PDF from Ms. Judy, who goes to the city clerk who's responsible for the minutes, and she can't edit the document because it's a PDF, so I guess it was purposely sent that way, but you want her to send possibly in a Word document, or maybe on a piece of loose leaf?
Do you want me to email that?
The edits that we want Judy to make to a Word document that she couldn't send to the clerk because she sent a PDF? Is that what just happened?
It's a big waste of time.
I mean, seriously?
It's the clerk's responsibility to send the accurate minutes to this council, by law. Period.
Could we do this? Could we do Word to you?
I've always gotten Word. This is the first month.
You amended it.
That's a true request.
This is the first month that the mayor...
But wait, but wait.
This is the first month ever that the mayor has asked Ms. Judy to submit me the PDF rather than the Word document.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to resolve this, so I'm just asking.
Good luck.
She send you the Word, you make your edits, and send it back to Judy, and then she puts it in PDF.
You can delineate the edits.
What is the PDF deal? I don't understand.
PDF sets it, sets it, it can't be changed. I think it should be...
I'm the clerk. I have it in my documents. I can make a PDF if I want to make it to PDF. What's the deal with the PDF? I don't get it. I work for the City of Harrahann, the municipal clerk of the City of Harrahann.
It was sent to her in PDF. She requested the Word document.
I have no idea what the deal is about this.
And she wasn't given a Word document to make changes that needed to be made.
This is just another game. Game. Another monthly game.
All right. Whatever.
Okay.
What did you want to add?
I don't have anything further to say. I would like the Word document. That's it. Simple.
Did you...so you did not send...
Again, for the third...
No, she asked you for the Word document.
I would just like the Word document.
But after it was asked for you to send it by the mayor, who, by the Larson Act, I can quote the statute too, to send it to Ms. Judy, you did not, correct?
Because I'm the municipal clerk in the minutes, set by law, that's my job, set by law.
But, no, by law, the mayor can dictate, so I'm just saying...
So, you wait, so you can delegate job duties that are set by law?
Upon the clerk being absent.
She can delegate job duties that are set by law?
Because we're not going to approve them anyway, because that's time immemorial.
You can delegate everybody else's job duties.
No, she never said delegate.
But my certain job duties are set by law.
She never said delegate. She said dictate. She never said delegate. She said dictate. Dictator.
Approval of the minutes of the...let's do the approval, please.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting, I mean, the council meeting on December 21st.
2017. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded? Seconded, lacks for lack of a second.
Reading of the minutes of the special meeting on December 28th.
2017.
I haven't received those minutes from Ms. Johnson.
Did you receive those? Did you send those minutes, the December 28th?
No, you sent the December 7th, and I emailed you just saying that you sent the December 7th to me rather than the 28th.
I sent the 28th. I checked my email.
I don't have the 28th. I mean, I triple-checked my email to make sure, and I do not have it. All I have is the...
So, we will...
All I have is the 7th. You sent them both together. You sent the 21st and the 7th. You meant to send the 28th, but you sent the 21st and the 7th.
Well, let's move on.
Can I have a motion to move with the minutes for December 28th until the next city council meeting in February?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes. Communications?
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in December, and the Planning and Zoning Board did not meet in January.
Resolutions, there are none. Ordinances for approval?
Ordinance number 1837, which was previously proposed, ordinance number 2017-16, which was vetoed on December 29, 2017. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodier and seconded by Councilman Hewitt. It's an ordinance approving the rezoning of 6915 Jefferson Highway, lots B4, B5, B6, and D1A, tract C, Soniat Plantation subdivision, City of Harrahann, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, from R1 to C1.
I would like to reiterate that the Planning and Zoning Board did not recommend this rezoning. The public hearing is now open.
Good evening. I want to thank the three council members who voted in our favor at the last meeting. And I want to address the council members who had not voted in our favor at the last meeting, and address the two concerns that the mayor had. I don't want to go back into the history y'all have heard before, but there were two issues that the mayor brought up in her email regarding why she chose to veto the ordinance. And the first, I'll address them in reverse order. The first one, I think the chief of police addressed, which was that he would be going out to Carolyn, just as he does everywhere else. And also, I recall personally from multiple meetings here before y'all, that he had said he would address the issues that anyone on Carolyn had. He spoke with Mr. Maroni personally, and the two of them discussed that they would both be working together to make sure that any issues that any of the citizens had would be addressed. The second issue that the mayor brought up was the ambiance, and I'm paraphrasing here, but just the neighborhood ambiance. I want to address that in two fashions. First, next door to this property, again, is a C2 commercial facility. It has a gas station, there's stores there, and it is on Jefferson Highway. And I know I spoke with you, Councilman Johnston, about the 2010 City Master Plan. And I spoke also with the author of that master plan. And actually, having residential properties on Jefferson Highway is dangerous. Having residential driveways that let out into a state highway is dangerous. The idea that Jefferson Highway was mixed was because of the fact that it had previously been mixed. There were already residential properties that were on that street. So, the idea that it was mixed was, we're not going to kick somebody out of their residence if that's where they chose to live, that's where they live, and that's what it is. But moving forward, the idea for both Hickory and for Jefferson Highway in that master plan in 2010, and as it goes forward, would be that that would remain as commercial as it is and become more commercial in the future. So, you know, we've spoken 100 times about, you know, the fact that we've tried to work with the citizens, to do everything possible to make it as comfortable of a transition as possible. I mean, the neighborhood has already, like, Jefferson Highway is already commercial, and if there's anything else that I can address, any other issues, you know, I've opened, I've sent emails, I'm happy to, you know, we will discuss anything with any of the council members, but I really reurge Ms. Benton and Mr. Johnston that if y'all would consider changing your vote and allowing this ordinance to pass. I know several citizens have been in contact with you about, they are in favor of this. There's, I know, competing Facebook petitions, but just with all that information, I hope y'all have a chance to change your minds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Ed Crowe, 424 Soniat. Let me just say, you know, I won't address this to the mayor because she already vetoed it and gave her reasons, but I will say this to the mayor, that the words that you put in my mouth before, I'm glad to hear that you're thinking of me while you're laying, going to sleep at night. And I appreciate that.
Thank you for the humor. It's much appreciated.
I didn't mean anything...
I won't tell jelly.
So, let me just say this. I think, as we said before, and to address some of the comments that the previous gentleman said, we're talking about this will bring in revenue. There was a business plan done, but we need this plus more. If we don't, what's going to happen? Our taxes are going to go up. So we have to start bringing in revenue. We have to look at other ways. We have to have a revenue plan to help us get to where we need to be. So, Councilwoman Benton, Councilman Johnston, I'm sure you got plenty of calls or emails from a lot of the posts that I personally put out, or others have put out. I hope you will consider this. I did several polls on Facebook, and I think the last one I did was 98% of the citizens of all of Harrahann said they want to see this. There was another poll I did that said 100% want to see this. So, there's no 50/50, there's no competing, you know...
Can I...can we just have quiet in the chambers? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There's no competing incidents on Facebook. It's overwhelming. It's very overwhelming. I wish you would highly consider this. It's, you know, think in terms of what we had when we had Magnolia Plantation, Chapatula's Plantation, they were extremely nice restaurants. I think Mr. Maroni's idea is fabulous, and will bring something to Harrahann that not only Harrahann residents will come to, but the surrounding residents will come to, New Orleans will come to. Chef Duke even made a comment that, using his words, that he closed his restaurant in New Orleans because he saw a crime firsthand. He was afraid of the crime. Well, we're the safest city in the state. So, people know that. If you have a nice restaurant in this city, people will come. And I think to prove that, the restaurant that Mr. Maroni just opened up, that I've visited several times, my wife and I, excellent food, and people are gone, and they like it. I think, as a matter of fact, you got five stars, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'm just asking, please consider reversing this veto. Let's put this on the books as something that's going to bring in revenue, and let's focus on other businesses that will bring revenue. If you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to address them. Not, thank you very much.
Bill Barnett, 249 Carolyn Drive. A couple of things that I wasn't going to bring up, but I guess I will. Now, first of all, we have gotten the unofficial, the results of an unofficial poll that ranks 98% or 100% of the people of Harrahann in favor of this, you know. I suspect that the polling was about as accurate as all those polls that told us that Hillary Clinton was going to become president last January 20th.
Maybe the mayor's poll.
Yeah, mhm. I don't know about any polls. So, that's one thing. The second thing is, we heard there was a business plan, and great, how much tax revenue? I haven't heard anyone, not a single person, say, "This is how much tax revenue." And that's what I keep hearing is such an important thing, the tax revenue. But nobody's telling us, "Well, we think this is how much it will be, but within this range." Because point estimates are rarely worth the price you would pay for them, but, you know, you can have a reasonable range. The other thing I've mentioned many times before, the neighborhood, you know, this is an important thing. This is a peaceful community. It's happy, it's, you know, I mean, and, well, let's put in a business at the corner, that will be the key, will make it happier, but not for the neighbors. So, it's about money. Well, if it's about money, and as you said, if we don't bring in revenue from somewhere else, we may have to raise taxes. You mean that everybody in Harrahann would have to pay a little more taxes so that a few people don't get stuck? A few people on Carolyn Drive, right there, who are going to pay? Yes, the burden would fall on us. Oh, you know, you're going to say there's no such thing as a cost to this.
He's addressing the council, ma'am, sir.
Yeah. He's basically telling you there's no cost from this. No cost. Nobody's going to have a burden from this. But you, and I, and everyone else knows, there is going to be, and it's the people along there that are going to pay the burden if this thing passes, you know, so the veto is overwritten. So, first of all, I would like to thank those councilmen who voted the way I think all of you all should have voted in the first place, and I hope that all of you will vote to sustain the mayor's veto, because I don't see why a few people should bear the burden of trying to generate revenue for the whole place. Let's all just pay a little more property tax, then we'll have the money. Why should the families along there have their neighborhood screwed up? It doesn't make sense. And, most importantly, it ain't fair, as they say, to put the whole burden on a relatively small number of people. It's just not fair. Thank you.
I can see there's 200 signatures. Great.
Mr. Chaddeling?
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I believe some of these residents in here right now are talking about, "Raise the taxes." They never vote that way. You put a millage up, it's going to fail. They don't vote to raise the taxes. I believe if the city went through and reassessed everyone's property taxes, and made everyone pay a fair share of property taxes, city would see a big increase in income. pay a fair share of property taxes, city would see a big increase in income. Very big. You could lobby Jefferson Parish to work on it. I also believe Mr. Kraus' poll, Facebook, it's not real. Trust me, I just, I just disagree with him on that.
Anything else? The mayor's poll that?
I, I believe, I believe, I believe I'm here addressing the council. I believe I'm in favor of this restaurant. I also believe other property, which I believe the council for Mr. Maroney stated, the master plan for Harahan said residential property would be converted to commercial. That's the way it's going to fall. That's the way it should fall on Jefferson Highway. I'm not saying every piece of property needs to become commercial. Also, I believe when Mr. Maroney purchases this property from his uncle, I believe the property tax is going to triple, because his uncle's been there so long, the property taxes are so low from when he bought the place, I'm sure the property taxes are going up. I also was sitting in a restaurant, and a guy from Morguard or Morvan or something, that owns where Dollar General and Colonial Manor are sitting, he told me he was in town because they're tearing down the strip mall and putting up 150 apartments. He said that he had approvals and permits. I called him out on it, I disagree, but I sure hope that's not true. I believe that's false information. But the guy was in town, that's what he said. He was meeting with Harahan to get permits to tear that down and put apartments up. Is that true? I don't know. I hope not. I heard it a month ago. Also, I don't believe any of these businesses in Harahan advertise their sales tax revenue. They don't just put on the market like what their sales tax revenue is. He's asking for a plan of properties of their sales tax. I believe you could come in and request a business's sales tax. I believe, I'm sure Mr. Maroney and them did a study, and they projected what their sales would be. I mean, there's some reason they want to make this restaurant there. But I can't see, do you know the revenue from all other businesses over there, their sales tax? I don't think. If y'all do, I'd like to know, but I don't think. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Momas, I live at 975 Hickory. This is my first time being at a Harahan City Council meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's been interesting. Couple of things that I'm going to touch on that are a little bit possibly different than what we've already heard. Number one, I moved to Harahan about, about a year and a half ago. I worked for a large corporation that is in the Elmwood area. I moved here, I am actually a tenant of Mr. Maroney's. I'm renting for him, from him now, and I'm in the process of looking to buy a house in Harahan. This is ultimately where I think I want to live. With that being said, I, I am looking forward to this property, because not only do I live in Harahan, and I work in Elmwood, but Harahan is where I currently and will in the future bring clients and customers to entertain. And that's a big deal to me, that's a big deal to those that I work with, all of the salespeople in my industry. We like being out here, and we like showing off the area that we're in, and we have these meetings with people from all over the state. So we really appreciate any place we have where we can really show a really-
You can plug your business.
-bright side. That's not why I'm here. But, I will say that as a tenant, on the opposite end of Mr. Maroney, he has been at my beck and call for everything that I've needed, and I am not an easy person to, to deal with, because I want to make sure things are, are pretty perfect. And he's always made sure that he's addressed those things quickly, and without, without any argument. So I, I think for those residents that are concerned that those issues will not be addressed, I have had a, I've had no, nothing but a positive experience with Mr. Maroney, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. But again, I am somebody who wants to make Harahan my, my permanent home. I'm from New Orleans, I'm born and raised in New Orleans, and this is where I want to live, and I would like all of you to want me to live here as well. And you guys, I realize there's some residents that may ultimately be inconvenienced, and I feel for you, I do, but I think that you have to give something, an opportunity, if you want any chance at progress, and having not only my tax dollars that are going into, we talk about revenues for the restaurant, yes, we plan to be very regular patrons there, doing meetings and whatnot, so we're talking about some higher bills there, but also, my future property taxes here in Harahan, that's, that's my ultimate goal. So I just wanted to put that out. I did reach out to Councilman Johnston, we had a, we had a nice discussion, I appreciated the sentiments, so, again, my first time being involved with this, but I hope that, I hope that I was able to shed a little bit of a different light from some other directions than you've previously heard, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for coming, for feeding me new numbers. Thank you. I don't know how I got this music, so sorry.
Hi, my name is Lori Wilt, and we live at 210 Carolyn, which is directly across the street from the Soniat Plantation. And, in my opinion, if there was any negative effects of it, the brunt of that would come on us from our position, and we are completely in favor of it. Every issue, every concern we have come across, Kevin Marone has dealt with immediately and solved. I think this would be a major bonus to the city, and if I'm the one who's directly across the street and I'm in favor of it, I don't see where the big problem is, it just makes no sense to me. I see this as nothing but a win-win situation for the city of Harahan.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to add one quick.
You are?
My name's Norman Wildom.
Hi, Norman.
I live at 210 Carolyn. Something that has been mentioned several times in the past two meetings that I've been to about this, is about the ambiance. Well, without the ambiance in the plantation, he don't have his restaurant that he wants to have, so what do y'all think is going to go away, you know? He don't have them pretty trees and a nice house, he don't have what he wants to have that restaurant. So, I don't understand the concern either.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett?
Helen Barnett, 249 Carolyn Drive. I'm going to take a slightly different tack. I am against this project, and I thank the two council people who have voted to uphold the mayor's veto, and I hope they will vote to uphold her veto tonight. Here's what I'm thinking. There are three houses across the street from this property on Carolyn Drive. The big house is at the corner, and this, it goes about 200 and something feet down our street. And across the street, you have three houses facing it. I think one of them, or two of them are rentals, so I'm not sure that they're homeowners. But anyway, if Mr. Maroney gets to rezone his residence to commercial, these three people across the street, these three houses, 150 to 200 and something feet, suppose they want to change their residence to commercial zoning. Would you please think about that? So, they're not facing Jefferson Highway, they're facing Carolyn Drive, they're facing commercial. I wouldn't particularly want to face commercial. If it were my property, I want to change my zoning to commercial. And that could start a domino effect down our street. And on what grounds would their rezoning be denied? What grounds? It would be arbitrary and capricious to not give them the commercial zoning when they're facing commercial. Okay? So where does it stop? It's not on Jefferson Highway, that's on my street, Carolyn. So I have a big concern about that. And, Mr. Maroney, I'm, your project, you know, in another time and place, I would say it looks lovely, but I don't want the character of my street to become commercialized. So, I thank you all for listening.
Did you already speak?
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to verify that at least two of the three houses she's speaking about are not rentals. One was at one point, although the person who is living there now says she is the original owner, but two of those three, I can personally verify are not rentals.
Thank you.
We will now close, address the council.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, thank you, I didn't-
Andrew Case, my wife and I moved to Ashmore Street over the summer, bought an older house that was basically, everything needed to be gutted, and we're still working on that. Our goal of moving is, we have a six-year-old. I grew up most of my life in River Ridge with my grandparents by Paradise Manor, and a dream of mine actually was always to live in Imperial Woods, a good friend of mine lived right across the street, we were able to buy the house. But since moving in, this is also my first council meeting, so that's interesting, since moving in, the politics have certainly been interesting. There's other topics that don't pertain to the restaurant, but when I heard the restaurant was coming, I became very excited. Our, my family and I, we got to eat a lot, we go to nice places, and we really like to support local. We go to Kim On's a couple of times a week, every employee of my sister's table knows me now, my son loves the brownies, so I'm there a couple of times a week getting brownies for him on the way home. And so the next line, or the next thing was Cafe Giovanni closed, we had gone there many times in the French Quarter, and then Chef Duke was going to come to Harahan. I texted all my friends, I posted on Facebook, this world-famous chef, I could walk to where his restaurant's going to be. I then see some complaints on Facebook, like messing up residential streets, but when you look at the plan, all the parking's in the front, there's not even an outlet to the side, there's over 20 spots, this is a restaurant that's going to take reservations, have a certain number of seats. I, I don't know Kevin Marone or really too many people in the area, but I assume that he can do some math to say, if we have this many people eating, this is how many parking spots we might need. And then I also saw on Facebook where people said, the, the police wouldn't be able to handle it. Just from my short time living here, I, if I lived there, I would trust if someone drank too much or something, or was in front of my house, or parked in front of my driveway, and I called the police, I'm pretty sure they would deal with that. On top of that, it seems other people have other opinions, if someone was, was going to tell me they're going to put a Commander's Palace-type restaurant right next to my house, I would be all over that. I'd be best friends with the bartender, best friends with the chef. That would be amazing. I mean, I'd be throwing parties just to go eat at this place. And so when, when I move to an area that, it's obviously a small city, the tax revenue is needed, and you're going to have this amazing project come in, Jefferson Highway is commercial. Growing up in River Ridge, I mean, always, always up and down Jefferson Highway shopping, so this idea of, well, we have 10 other restaurants on Jefferson Highway, why can't we have this one? This one's not in a strip mall, it's a beautiful standalone place where people are going to come from all over to eat, it really worries me about long-term living here. And my wife and I have talked about it, along with some of the other issues, our kid's six, he'll be going to, hopefully Jesuit in maybe six or seven years. If all these businesses are going to get killed, if the revenue's not going to be there, if we, if we have to go to Mid-City or the French Quarter every time we want to go to a nice restaurant, we might as well just move to Mid-City when it goes to Jesuit. And that's a serious conversation we've been having. So I would like to live here, like to come to more council meetings, but this idea that some restaurants can be zoned in, or some businesses can be zoned in, but this one plot on Jefferson Highway can't, for whatever reason, just really doesn't inspire very much long-term confidence, so.
Thank you.
We will, please sign now. We will now close, address the council. And I'm very impressed with all these new people who are willing to come. Council discussion?
I just want to say that contrary to what Mr. Kraus said, I did not receive emails in support of this project. I did receive one email in support of the project, and I think I only received four, maybe five, that were against the project.
Any other council discussion?
Well, ma'am, could you just explain to the viewing public about the overriding or upholding the veto when it comes to the vote?
You mean how many votes it will take?
No, no, no. You vetoed it.
Mhm.
So in order for us to override your veto-
We need four votes. You need four votes.
But it's going to have four, it's, because the difference, the difference when it's a veto, it's the opposite, correct?
Well, you need a, a super majority, basically, so you need four of the five councils. Two-thirds.
Just trying to say, do you say yea or nay? Right, is, right. So the yea or nay, so there's currently a veto that's currently in place. So it can either be yea to stand the veto.
Oh.
Right, that's what-
I, I was trying to understand what you were asking. What we're going to be doing is voting on the ordinance as it was presented previously. So the ordinance is, whoever's in support will vote who's in support, and who's ever against the ordinance for the rezoning is against. When you're trying to override a veto, instead of having a majority vote, you need basically a super majority, which would be, instead of having three council people, you would have to have four council people instead of the three prior needed. So, is that, is that, is that basically? Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Do I have a motion?
No, I have some council discussion, I'm sorry. As I've been working with Kevin on his project, it has just shed a lot of light. As most of you know, I'm the senior councilman here, and I've got to work with Mr. Villavasso for quite some time, and I was very sorry to see him go. And, and over that time, we started learning about promoting commercial in order to support our community. He made a very great point about, you know, backing residential on and off the highway. It's probably way more dangerous than backing commercial on and off the highway. But I think we have some, we have some opportunity that I don't want to see pass us by. New Orleans, we sit next to almost, I believe it's the murder capital of America, and we're the safest city in Louisiana. And I think at this time, we're at the, the cusp of the forefront of being able to cherry-pick every single good thing out of New Orleans and plant it right here in Harahan. We can take all their ideas with no crime and plant them right here. If Cafe, if Chef Duke from Cafe Giovanni's willing to come here, I guarantee you a lot more will be willing to come. Business brings business. Hickory and Jefferson Highway are our commercial thoroughfares. That's where we should promote commercial. I don't think a single one of us up here are promoting commercial in the middle of a neighborhood. We are promoting commercial on Hickory and Jefferson Highway, which could ultimately become St. Charles and Magazine, which is, which is New Orleans, other than the French Quarter, leading producer of income. Harahan, and you here, Mr. Hightmire, comes up here, we're, we're, we have some problems. We have a lot of drainage and sewage problems. Councilman Legass and I have, have been very close throughout the years, and we believe it's a 10 to 15 million dollar fix. That's where we think it's somewhere in that range. So I think Harahan has three decisions. Either we tax you so much that it'll be cheaper to live in Old Metairie, we promote commercial, or we unincorporate. This is my home, this is where I live, and I am going to fight for commercial. I have never, I have said from day one, from the day I've ever got elected, I am about promoting commercial up and down that highway. I want to lower your taxes. I don't want to keep putting fees on you as this administration has literally forced us to do. I want to lower your taxes, I want to take the fees, I want to fix what we need to fix, and I'm, I'm telling you, with just a few small projections, if we can just take a little piece of what New Orleans has done right, and plant it into a city where we're doing it right when it comes to crime and they can't, we'll pave the streets of gold. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Bodea.
Second.
All in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Yea.
Any opposed?
No.
We have three yays, two nays, veto stands. So could you plug in your word?
I ended up making it wear, didn't ask for the password anymore. Just stopped to ask for the password. Right, any of it turned down?
But now we have all those people who have left, so.
But now we have all those people who have left, so.
I'm sorry, before we proceed, I'd like to make a motion to, we forgot to put it on for new business, but I know at the beginning of every year, we do it in May of- the first meeting of every year, I know that-
Can we have quiet in the chambers? Thank you. I appreciate it.
I know the first meeting of the year, we normally have the mayor pro temp vote, and I'd like to put that on a new business.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to amend the agenda under new business to add mayor pro temp nomination by Councilman Johnston. Anyone who-
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea's, zero nays. Motion to amend is accepted. Better write this down, so I don't-
Yeah, let me go add that to new business. Me too. Hold on one sec. New business, mayor pro temp. All right. Is she ready? Mayor, you ready?
Huh?
You ready?
Mhm. Okay, ordinance number 1840, which was previously proposed, ordinance number 2017-34, which was vetoed on December 29, 2017.
No, we removed it.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodie and seconded by Councilman Wheeler. This is an ordinance amending the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, for the city of Harrahann, Louisiana, for the police department.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance? If there's no one wishing to speak, we will now close the public hearing, council discussion.
Just have one thing on this, Nicole, on this. It was attached to that, 1840, but this is about the Soniat.
It is?
Yeah, the reason.
Oh, the bottom part, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay.
Gotcha.
Yeah, two of them on there, so I printed up a vote.
Yeah. 1840 is one up next, but it's the second one for the reason.
Council discussion?
No discussion.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
And this would be the same circumstances. As we described prior, you vote on the ordinance, it requires a supermajority, so four councilmen would have to vote for the ordinance. To it.
Was that motion and second?
Need a second.
Was that Wheeler?
Yeah, I'm motioning.
So, I have a motion to proceed with the vote by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have four yea's, one nay. Ordinance passes. All right.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can we take like five minutes? I use the restroom.
We'll have a five-minute break, thank you.